Oh, where's my agenda? Oh, it's right on top. Look at that. All right, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the Wednesday, April 2nd, meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. It is, as usual, a couple minutes after 6:00, but not too far off. Item number one, as always, is an information exchange. We have a relatively brief agenda tonight, but I know the discussion of the comp plan will take up quite a bit of time, so I want to move quickly, get to that. Hopefully, everybody's come with lots to talk about. And again, to those of you who were at the public workshop on the 19th, just a couple weeks ago, thanks for being there. I think we got a lot of great, great feedback at that event and then trickling in after. So excited. I personally am excited to be wrapping up this process and look forward to tonight and then the final steps. I know there's more to do, but moving along. So Kyle, you want to give us a report? I know the PRB had a big meeting last Tuesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry. Yes, they meet on Wednesdays as well.
Yeah, so I can touch on that. So PRB meeting last week with seven projects on the agenda. It's a pretty late meeting. Two shoreline stabilization projects, so kind of relevant to the first item on our agenda.
The last two.
Tonight.
Well, probably not the last two.
Yeah, there might be a couple more. But yeah, that's kind of highlighting the need for that amendment that we're looking at. In addition, there is a small addition to the rear parking area of 194 Main Street that was approved. Main Golf, the golf course, came forward for a conceptual plan for site plan review for a new driving range at the golf course. It's like a 6,000-square-foot kind of covered hitting bay area, and they'd be moving the driving range from the rear of the golf course area to the front, the 295 side. So they're going to come back probably in May for their full site plan application. The Sigri Drive subdivision, they came with a really minor amendment to their subdivision just to change the lot lines between lots 2 and 3 to kind of give some of the land from Lot 2 to Lot 3, the undeveloped portion of the subdivision. So I think in the future, if anyone...
Where was that again? I'm sorry.
Sigri Drive. I think it's off Independence Drive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Right now, it's a driveway kind of leading to the two front lots. And then there's a third, bigger lot out back that's mostly wet, but there is some portion of that lot that's developable.
Was that the final stage of a very drawn-out process? Or was that, no, was that just an amendment in the process, mostly wrapped up?
Yeah, they had come back a couple years ago for an amendment, but that was a different application. So the idea then was to add in a fourth lot. This one was a different application.
From Lot 2 to Lot 3, the undeveloped portion.
Who's talking?
I think I was talking, but it was me in the past, so. All right. And then the last project was the biggest item on the agenda, the Freeport Sewer District project, the upgrade to the treatment facility on South Freeport Road. The project was approved, both the Phase 1 and the Phase 2. There was a condition that, there was a lot of discussion around it, you know, that the board put on for some extra landscaping. So the district's going to go back, work with a landscape architect to present a updated landscaping plan to provide some additional buffering around the new second access driveway into the site and the new administration building. But that project was approved and does not need to go back to the board. So that when we get that additional landscaping in, it'll be something that we send out for peer review and that ultimately I'll sign off on. So it was, it was great to get through that and have that one behind us. So yeah, that's pretty much it, though. Move on.
All right. Item number two will be a public hearing to discuss proposed amendments to the Freeport Shoreland zoning ordinance to update definitions in Section 107, change the reviewing authority for shoreline stabilization projects to the staff review board, Section 305, and allow certain exemptions within the required setback on non-conforming lots with existing dwellings, Section 306, and other cleanup and clarifying changes. This is something we talked about last week, month, rather, to talk about these updates. And I think we found them to be largely good ones and clarifying and allowing a little bit of flexibility in the case of the non-conforming lots, small things in setbacks that can be changed. And I think also, especially in the, in light of the number of shoreline stabilization projects that we've seen recently changing that review process will be helpful to a lot of landowners. So I think that's a great change. Tonight will be a public hearing, as a reminder. Kyle, do you want to give us any additional color before, before we open it up for a brief discussion with the board? And then I do personally, at least, want to ask Nick Adams, our code enforcement, esteemed code enforcement officer, who is kind enough to be joining us on Zoom here for a little bit of clarification on the definition of height. We had a discussion last month, you guys will remember, about within that definition, what a sill means. And I think Nick hopefully can shed some light on that for us, since it is still in here, so.
Yeah, I won't add too much. You know, we covered a lot of this last month. I think that, I mean, the biggest thing in here really is the shoreline stabilization piece, the, I mean, the biggest change functionally, switching that over to the staff review board. We get a lot of these. They fill up the PRB's agendas. Even if they can go through them pretty quickly, there's not a ton that the PRB typically weighs in on. So that's, I mean, I know from a staff perspective, it's something that we're, you know, really looking forward to. One thing that's happened since the last time, last month when we talked about this, we did send it out to DEP for review and comment. They came back with a few minor edits. So one of the things we were doing here is removing mentioning, mentions of rivers and great ponds. They caught a few more instances of that that just ended up striking through. But there was no real substantive comments or changes that they caught or recommended. So we're pretty much going with the amendment that we had. I think in one spot where the board last month caught, you know, the need for some parentheses around the number, we made that change. A couple of the definition changes we talked about last time. I did go back and just check their consistency with what's in the mandatory shoreline zoning act from the state. They do match that. So I do think if there's some question about interpretation of definition or something like that, that's why Nick's here. He can weigh in on how those definitions are used more functionally. Other than that, we advertised for the public hearing in the paper, so this is all set for tonight. And if the board's ready, they could make a motion to recommend to council. That would be our next step after this.
Does anybody on the board have any questions before we open up the public hearing?
No.
No? Nick, can I ask the clarifying question on the definition of sill and just make sure that that's the definition that makes sense to you? And if you don't mind, a brief description of how that is interpreted in town. So for example, you know, like a walkout basement that's within the shoreline district, you know, where I think the old definition mentioned the grade on the water side or something, you know, finished grade, something to that effect, mean, original grade, downhill side of the structure and the highest point of the structure, that was the old, the old definition of height. And the new definition references the sill, which, you know, to me could mean a couple of different things. But if you don't, if you don't mind, Nick, shedding a little light on that, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, so this was a statutory change. We adopted the new floodplain ordinance based on the FEMA flood maps, where a lot of municipalities, especially down in, like, York County, basically all these non-conforming structures came in the floods and dumped the new maps. And it was an issue with trying to raise the structures in the flood zone. So the legislature made a statutory change, which is not in the DEP's chapter 1,000, but it is in the statute. So we could enforce it without it being in the ordinance, but enforcement has to happen in the ordinance. So what the change is, basically, per the statute, and the first part of the height of the structure deals with the structures that are in the flood zone, and then the second half deals with the structures that are outside the flood zone. And the sill matters depending on what type of flood zone you're in. So if you're in a coastal B or A zone, you're going to measure from the, you know, it lives on the bottom of the, of your sill. You're basically the structural number of floor system. If you're just in an A or A E zone, it's not coastal. You measure from the top of the floor. That's basically consistent throughout, depending on what zone you're in, where you're going to make the measurement. And then that's when you go to the section and, I guess, the section, and to a non-conforming, which allows you to go up to three feet above that base flood elevation, which the base flood elevation's either, you're measuring it from the bottom of the sill or the top of the sill, depending on what zone you're in, the flood zone.
Okay. So how does that play out with, you know, if somebody wanted to come in and put, like, put the house basically on stilts? Is there something that regulates how tall the stilts could be before the sill? Or is it, you know...
It all depends. It depends on the zone. So if you're in a velocity zone, it's going to be a lot different than if you're just in an A zone or a coastal A zone compared to a regular A zone. So it all depends. Like, in the velocity zones, a lot of things have to be on stilts, and then you measure bottom of the sill. You don't measure off of the actual stilts or the post. It's the bottom of your floor system, that sill plate. Basically, it's going off the floor. It's not written the greatest. I understand what it is, but that's what the legislature adopted. But it's basically your, it's going to be your floor system that, that's what they're trying to make the sill. Because that's what floodplain ordinance and everything else measures from.
There is no definition of sill in here, and I think that was the core of the issue is, would there be any confusion about how you compute what the sill is?
Well, it all goes back to your floodplain, our floodplain ordinance that tells you where you measure it from. So that whole definition stems from the floodplain ordinance, from out of statute, it gets brought into our ordinance. I'm sure we could clarify it a little bit more if you wanted to. It was just basically matching state law. But that is the intent, is to mirror the floodplain ordinance, because you're going to measure it in two different places depending on the flood zone that you're in.
Got you.
Nick, just wondering why the definition in B for new structures couldn't be the same definition for existing structures? That would exclude the sill definition.
So that, the B is basically the same definition that we had before. It just excludes the stuff that's in the flood zone, if that makes sense. So A was added because of the, there's any structure that's in the flood zone.
Got you. So that applies only in the flood zones and then...
Right. B is the general definition outside of that.
B is what we had.
Okay. So that's, so I think, so the thing that that tells me is, within a flood zone, you're not going to see very many projects that have, like, a finished basement or something that is below the level of the sill of the house, because it's in a flood zone. So why would you build something that gets flooded? Whereas in B, that's not so much an issue. Does that make sense? Am I thinking about that in a way that makes sense, Nick?
Yeah. And it's also, it's, it really should say floor, not sill, because it also would include a basement.
Okay. So it would include, so if you wanted to...
Try to elevate it.
Yeah, that was kind of the core, my issue with it before was like, if it means floor, it should say floor, because I could see somebody saying, oh, it's not the sill. That's the, that's my finished basement floor, and I got a four-foot, or rather, 10-foot foundation wall, so my house is actually only 20 feet, when it really, if you take a tape measure out there, it might be 30 feet to the gable. Which, I don't, you know, again, I don't have a particular problem with the height of these structures necessarily. I just, I just, from your perspective, I guess, I want to make sure that this is clear. And from the perspective of somebody coming for a permit, make sure it's clear. That's all. But if, but if it can be, if it matches the state statute and it can be explained to anyone applying for a permit and it, you know, it doesn't raise any flags for you guys, you know, you and Alex, then I think that's...
So does that mean somebody in the floodplain can't have a basement? Where do they start measuring from? Is it the primary floor or is it the basement floor?
It depends on what type of flood zone you're in. If you're in a velocity zone, you're in the, you, well, sure isn't many of structures in the town of Freeport that are going to be in a velocity zone that have basements. You wouldn't be able to build a new one in a velocity zone. But in an A zone, you can, and you have certain other criteria that you can do in the flood zone. But Freeport's not like, Winslow Park is probably the only area, that area, that we have real problems. Everywhere else, we have higher areas and the floods, the houses are outside the flood zone.
So in your opinion, this is not going to cause any issues?
No. It's going to help a couple people that are small structures right on the shore.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I don't want to get bound up on something that the state is handing down to us. And if it, you know, if it, if it's amenable to the codes, folks, I think that's, that's good enough for me at this point.
It's one of these things that if it becomes a problem, we can modify.
Yeah, we'll take another look, but I think we could go, we could go too far, further into the weeds than we, than we certainly need to go.
But somewhere, there ought to be a definition of how we measure, if it's the top of the, top of the floor beam or the bottom of the floor beam. It ought to say that somewhere, either in a...
Sounds like, yeah, that's a flood, there's a little bit more clarity in the flood.
To our floodplain management.
But does that say that somewhere?
Yeah. I think that's what Nick said.
Yes, it's the definition in the, in Chapter 16 of our floodplain ordinance.
Okay.
Elevated building. Just a different ordinance. It's not in here, but it's...
Well, it's written down somewhere, so somebody can reference back.
Excellent. I'm anticipating a relatively brief public hearing tonight, given that... Do we have anyone on Zoom?
One person, but I'm not sure if they're here.
One person on Zoom and zero people who I expect to come. I mean, you guys are people, but I suspect, I suspect you're here for the comp plan, not for the flood.
I'm going to comment on this one.
So anyway, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Open a public hearing?
Second.
And a second from Andrew. All in favor? All right, the public hearing is now open. Anyone who wishes to speak has a moment. For the one person who is on Zoom, you can see who it is, or feel free to, to raise your hand if you have anything about this. I'm honestly a little surprised. I would have thought somebody would come out to speak in favor, especially of the shoreline, the stabilization projects moving to, but anyway.
I think it's one of those things that, I mean, the people have gone through it, they're done with it.
It's a good change.
You know, if you haven't gone through it, you know, you might not be on the radar.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor? All right. Assuming there is no further discussion, does someone on the board want to take a crack at reading the motion that Kyle very generously prepared for us, which finds that, just to paraphrase, because it's been a minute since I read it, but it is consistent with the town's current, that is, 2011 comp plan in that it continues to be in compliance with the state shoreline thing?
Yeah, I mean, this one's a little, there's not like a specific strategy or anything in our existing comp plan that'll, you know, tie directly to this. It's more of a process change on the staff review board side, but at the same time, we're not altering any of the standards really substantively, you know, with the shoreline outside of being consistent with state law, which is already something our comp plan, you know, references.
All we're doing is, are we just reading this bottom paragraph, Per?
Go for it, Andy.
Sure. We had ordered that the Freeport Planning Board recommend to the town council that the shoreline zoning text amendment to amend Chapter 65, shoreline zoning ordinance regarding proposed amendments to update definitions, change the reviewing authority for shoreline stabilization projects to staff review board, allow certain exemptions within the required setback on non-conforming lots with existing dwellings, and other non-substantive clarifying changes. It's consistent with the Town of Freeport comprehensive plan.
I hear a second from Bonnie. All in favor? Excellent. That's unanimous of members voting, present, present and voting, I should say. Great. Thanks, Nick. Nick's gone already, but somebody can...
He's still there.
Oh, he is? Okay. Well, thanks, thanks, Nick, for being here to weigh in and give us a little insight on, on the definitions and the changes. Appreciate it. I know it's outside of normal business hours. So moving right along to item number three, which is the discussion of the first draft of the new comprehensive plan. We will discuss with...
We're going to have any information exchange other than that we've had?
Uh, we could, at the end, maybe we can add a non-business item or non-agenda item, items.
Yeah, I just had two or three things I wanted to bring up, not big discussion items.
Sure. Do you feel like they should go before?
I think, no, they don't have to, but...
But before we adjourn?
Yeah, I mean, they're like one sentence each.
Okay. While you guys are getting set up, do you want to, Mitch, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the parking study was released last night to the town council.
That's a good note.
And that the parking study seemed to show that we could consume 10 acres of land, enough to build about 500 homes, and dump 500 new parking spaces on the demand and still have sufficient parking. That seemed to be the conclusion. That's a rough incursory, but I thought we should be digesting that and double-checking that that's so.
It's a cool study. It's really...
I also wanted to make a comment on Andrew's comment. I had the pleasure of watching last night's council, which was that even if we want to not require, there's an issue about economics. Like, I think everybody wants to have, that shows we could add the 500 units and not require parking, because we don't need the parking. But it's not fair to not require parking. So we can bring this back up and discuss it a later time, but it puts a burden, there's an economic disparity there that we should pay attention to.
That's, that's, that's always been a...
I have talked with Brett about this. If there's time at an upcoming planning board meeting, if the board was interested, we could have Brett come in and do a little presentation.
I think it's super, super, super important on everything that we're planning to do, but the comp plan's going to take priority. I just...
In the next couple of months, we'll probably have some time.
I came in yesterday morning and met with Brett about the parking study for a few minutes as well. And it is public now, so everybody should go check it out. It's, it's an interesting study. Basically, they built a model to model kind of different scenarios of how, you know, existing conditions could be affected by current trends and, or future trends in development. And there's sort of a high, medium, low, you know, scenario. And they modeled, modeled it out and tried to come up with a couple of policy recommendations. I think there's going to be a little bit of a lull once we get through tonight and the next meeting and the comp plan, right, while we're waiting for the comp plan to go to the state and waiting for that part of the process to work through, where we're not, you know, we're going to sort of send it off. It will come back to us for final approval. But in the meantime, we're going to have a month or two where I think that's one of the things that we absolutely...
Presumably, we're going to start thinking about some of the recommendations in the comp plan, like changing some zoning. And then this will be front and center of what we have to think about.
Yep.
Excellent.
Yep.
Just my only position last night was, that was planned on, there would be enough parking if they, if they use shared parking.
Correct.
And the concept of shared parking is, you have a parking lot, and you share it because you get a deduction in your parking spaces. But if a building, my question was, if an apartment house comes in and provides no parking, how can they use somebody else's shared parking?
And to me, they have to lease. They have to have some, they have to lease.
If we have 500 spaces, then they have to lease, but we can't...
Maybe it's only they have to lease a few, because we don't think they need them. But they have to lease some. It's not fair.
Well, they still, to be shared parking, there should be a requirement, and you should not just claim somebody else's parking, say, we're not going to provide any with the house, because, because it's not their parking. It belongs to other people. Somebody paid for that parking, somebody pays taxes on it, and somebody took a deduction to put that parking lot in the shared pool, when the apartment house doesn't put anything in the shared pool.
Precisely.
That was my point.
Yep.
Okay. Second thing I wanted to bring up is the design ordinance and when and where.
What's happening, oh, what's happening, yeah.
It seems lost.
It's not lost.
Okay.
So I think North Star's working on a draft. Caroline and I got some comments back to them on some layout and like standards comments. So I think May potentially, if not, maybe June, we would get...
I'll repeat a comment I made before, which is, I've seen no, it seems to me, when you're writing a new ordinance, the first thing you would do is write an outline of bullet-pointed things we're going to do. And I have not seen that. So here's a plan being written without any oversight of what it's going to accomplish. We talked in rough language months ago and never saw another word. So I'm frustrated.
So the, well, I think the RFP pretty well got at the idea of what was being, what was supposed to be being done, right? It was taking our existing design ordinance and making it more clear, making it more easy to use, and, you know, by staff, by the project review board, by applicants.
All right. And I'm saying it's going wrong. Maybe it's following that and it'll be fine.
No, I'm just saying, I, I think what you'll see in, in the version that comes to you when it's ready is, is basically that. It's going to be kind of outlining those more specific standards that address what the original intent of the RFP was. So I'm not sure that there's...
I'll be patient.
No, 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 I get it. And I just, I think it'll, it'll get at what you're looking for. And I'm not sure, like, a middle step of...
Okay. I don't want to slow it down, and I get it. And that's, it's totally fine, really. I just wanted to express concern.
But it's, it's definitely being worked on, on both sides. And it'll be, like, I think, like Sam was saying, we're going to have the next couple of months, we're going to have lighter agendas, because...
This will be...
You know, this is going to be off the plate for the, the next few months. So that'll be the window where we really try to push and tackle a lot of design review conversation. And we've also talked in the past about some of those changes to our site plan review process and ordinance, bringing those forward. So I think those next few months are going to be the time that we're able to tackle a lot of those.
So just two more really vessel, because I really don't want to divert us. But I noticed in the, the council made two comments in their own agenda for the next year and their statement of priority that I think are important for us to voice here. And one of them was to explore form-based codes. And that is relevant to this conversation, because I have no idea if this has form-based codes or not. That's the core question that I have in my head. And I'm not saying that's the only answer. There might be another answer, but we don't know. And now we're hearing from the council that they like that idea.
Yep.
And so, okay. And then the last one was just to note that the council established the housing goal that we've talked about so much here and in the Housing Committee and in the Dogbone as a top priority of theirs. And they asked for how much by when, which is something I think maybe the task force and maybe this group needs to revisit.
There is a, there is a joint meeting right next week of the council and the housing...
There is, on the 8th. And so...
So anyone who's interested in that.
Correct. And I suppose that will be the...
In case you haven't gotten your, the workshop there.
Meetings.
When is that?
The 8th.
Next Tuesday, the 8th. It'll be a special council meeting just for housing to workshop the work of the housing task force.
Another workshop on housing.
Yes, correct.
Maybe someday we'll build some.
Well, this is supposed to, we gave them eight things to do right now. And so they're supposed to ratify that and let us get them done.
Yeah, a couple of the council goals, right, tie directly into work that the planning board could eventually do. That form-based code one, I think I had written a memo to Sophie, talking about some of the council goals just from planning staff perspective. So I think the first thing we would want to do in that form-based code one is learn a little bit more about where council was coming from and what they want to tackle specifically. We do have some components of form-based code already in our ordinance.
Sure.
You know, designer view, some of our...
I think it particularly relates to the design ordinance downtown. That's why it, they're connected. But anyway, thank you for the indulgence.
It's all tied together, which is part of the exciting part and also part of the challenge of a lot of things that need to happen in the flowers a month.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen?
Freeport Comp Plan. So last week, we sent over, can you guys hear me okay? I know you guys hear me okay, but Tom, I hope they can. I believe this is on, so we're all set. We sent over the first draft of, the first complete draft of the Freeport Comp Plan, which is in front of you online. I'm sure you all read the 44 pages of the front part of the plan, including the vision, future land use and goals, as well as the finalized 150 pages of inventory chapters. I know Mitch is nodding his head, saying he read it, front, front to back. And then we had some of the public participation summaries in there, too. And ultimately, the...
the implementation table. We also had a lovely workshop on the 19th. I thank you for those who came. I think it was a really good conversation, really focused on certain points. I think there's a lot of celebrations that were had from the community, but also a lot of really great points taken. And some of those changes and some of the conversations we had are reflected in this final plan. So for tonight, no presentation. We're just going to look at the plan. I'm going to point out some places where we've made some minor changes, areas for discussion, and some of the larger changes we've made, but they shouldn't be... They shouldn't draw too much attention because I think everyone's going to be in support of those. And then as Caroline had, I think, or Caroline or Kyle had mentioned, as part of your homework for tonight, was to look at the implementation table, which contains all the policies, both state and local. Again, the state goals are required, so I won't be taking any questions or comments and wordsmithing on the state goals, so we're going to leave those as is. But we're looking to the board to do the first round of prioritization. One thing you guys hadn't seen tonight is the implementation process, which I'll go through later. So we're going to be looking at those policies, doing a first round of prioritization, seeing some goal, a first round of goal-setting, because we do need to do that when we submit to the state. So that is a requirement to have priorities and assignments, and we'll get to that in a second. First things first, anyone have any immediate feedback from the workshop on the 19th? I'm not going to tell you. I'm not going to call on someone, but...
I like to hear myself talk. I'm sorry. I wasn't there, but I did watch the entire thing in a row, and I thought it was excellent. And I've sort of, you know, chomped a little bit at some of the previous ones, but I thought the conversation looked really robust and, you know, good things came out of it. I thought mostly you got support. You got a couple of good, you know, I made notes of what people said should be added, and I bet you've captured them. I haven't gone through every one of your 44 pages, but I think it was really well done.
Yeah, it's hard to meet high expectations on those. It was, there were, what, probably 65 to 80?
I think it was 60 to 70.
Yeah. So it was fewer people than some of the earlier workshops, but it was still well-attended and, you know, I think, yeah, I think it achieved some of what people were looking for or felt was missing from earlier workshops. And I say that with, you know, yeah, I think it was a great chance for the community to have a conversation. I also think that the earlier workshops, by and large, were important and valuable as well, and it's really hard, you know, it's hard to get a whole town together to have a discussion. And I think, you know...
But it helps us feel like it's, you know, it's like you have a public hearing. If nobody speaks, they had their chance.
Right.
And I feel like we've given it to the public. We've listened. They've said some things that were helpful.
Yep, and we've gotten some feedback since then, too, including the one that, you know, it's like hand-marked up. You know, we've gotten a lot of good feedback, and, you know, I think one thing that we, I think it's never going to be the case that we have a comp plan that serves everyone's needs. People are always going to think that certain things need to be emphasized more and less, and the priorities aren't quite aligned with people's personal priorities, but I think we have consensus around a couple of key issues. And my hope is that we can center those key issues and not get too lost in the weeds on the rest and move this forward in a way that allows us to make positive changes without getting too mired in the details, so.
Yeah.
There's plenty of details to get mired in. That's, my point is not that the details don't matter. My point is like, there's a lot of details in there already, and by and large, they're really good details, and so, yeah.
So one of the things, as Charles is getting ready to go page by page, is the elements that you've reviewed earlier, whether they're inventory chapters or the vision statement, the goals, the future land use map. I think it's fair to summarize that a lot of the comments we heard and the changes that resulted from that were additive to what you've reviewed. It wasn't a case of like, take this out to put this in. It was more like, that's good, but you also need to emphasize this and prioritize that and say more about this. So those are , in general, the kind of things that we can highlight tonight.
Yeah.
Last thing I would say, just as we're going through this earlier part, if you haven't looked at the inventory chapters recently, and I say that for the public, if anybody's listening, I don't know, go back and look again because things are much, much improved from the last time we looked at them as a board. The formatting is better. I know Charles has worked really hard, maybe others have too, but Charles is sitting right there, and he told me before the meeting that he has done it, so I'm more than willing to give him all the credit if he wants it.
I'm taking credit. It was a team effort.
But the graphs are better. There's updated data. Everything looks better. It's easier to digest. Like, it's really, it's come a long way. I have to admit, I haven't been through all 150 pages with a fine-tooth comb, but...
Here's an example.
Yeah, it's, I can't see that far. I mean, she's... But yeah, it really is easier to digest, and I, so it's both a plug to go back and look again, get another set of eyes on it. If you see anything, I assume we still have a moment maybe to make tweaks, but also just a thanks for really updating and making it look good. All right, I won't hold you up anymore.
Yeah. So I think to Ben's point, it's...
Caroline might, though.
Yeah. Before we dive in, can you just clarify, kind of, we have a goal tonight, and we want to come out here with a date away, and just give them a preview of this interim chapter, I'll call it, and just...
Of the implementation table?
Nope, just how this is working, because like Sam just said, we have time to look at this. We have a little bit of time, but then we're shipping out. So could you cover some of like the, just highlight...
Yeah, like if we want to give it a tight edit by when...
Absolutely. Yeah, so just a review of kind of our next steps and what does it look like. So tonight, we're obviously in front of the planning board showing the first draft. I would say to Ben's point earlier, this, there's not much new here for you guys. We're really just looking to make sure that a lot of the feedback heard at the workshop is captured. Any final touches? I don't think there's going to be any substantial changes needed to be made. I think we have a few areas where we do want to discuss tonight to see if we want to put that in the final vision moving forward or the final draft moving forward. On the 15th, we're presenting this to town council to get their perspective on it. See, same thing. I'm not expecting too many substantial comments to come from them. But ultimately, we need Sam as the chair of the planning board and Joanna as chair of the town council to sign a small slip of paper so that we can submit this to the state. So to get a state-consistent comp plan, the state has to review to make sure that all the required elements are in there, whether it's certain data, certain parts like the future land use, certain goals and strategies that are on the implementation table. They will provide us certain feedbacks on certain recommendations if things aren't exactly clear, if there's one table missing, which shouldn't be the case, but they'll give us pretty clear changes that we need to make as we wait for the state to review. So if we get Sam and Joanna's signature the 15th or the 16th of April, we'll send it in as soon as possible, so the 17th, 18th, 19th, and we'll look for about 60 to 90 days as a review time.
It usually takes 90.
Usually takes 90 days. Fingers crossed that the state gets to it faster. Most likely not. And during that time, we'll have a public comment period. I think it's only fair, we're going to be making changes from the state comments. They always want to change or fix something. But during that time, I think that's when we're going to be taking a majority of the public comment from minor wordsmithing, which isn't my favorite, but it's an important way to make sure of, you know, a good, good written plan. And also, just if there's any content, I think if there's any things that come up during those 60 to 90 days, we can come back to the planning board, really kind of do one final, what should be in, what should be out. Again, I'm not expecting much of that because I think we've had a really great comprehensive process, no pun intended. And then we will make those final changes based on the states and maybe some public comments, or maybe things change over the next three months, so we need to make some minor changes. And then we'll look to get adopted by the town whether, in the fall. I won't go too further into detail of that, but look to get it adopted in the...
So if it takes 90 months, I mean, 90 days from the middle of April, that's, we get it back the middle of July, right? So then realistically, hopefully, we, the public and any other planning board members or other board members, council members, whomever, get their comments in such that hopefully we have a draft that has the further edits in August. Does that seem, maybe that's a little optimistic?
Yeah.
But in either case, maybe we have, whether we meet about it and then do the final adoption in September, maybe that's the goal, is September adoption, and then it goes to the council.
Yep.
So just so everybody has that, yeah. Hopefully, we have earlier fall rather than later fall, but...
Another way to phrase it is that this is not the final version of the plan, but nor does it need to be to get it, the state to review it. So we're still, it's still a malleable document, but we're pretty confident that not too much has to change. But we do have some talking points even tonight.
So when we talked about this yesterday, we called this draft one. You guys are going to give comments tonight. I am going to go to the council on the 15th, and North Star is going to join me. We're going to do it as an abbreviated discussion. If we get, I'll report on any changes that you guys decide you want to make tonight to the council. If they have additional changes that are super substantive, North Star will make those changes in the version we send to the state. At that point, the newest version will be submitted online and will be pushing out public review and comment while we're at the state. So I call this kind of a temporary version. It's special for the planning board and council, and then we'll have another very special version that, a little more refined potentially based upon your comments, that we're shipping out to the state in about two weeks. And then you'll want to tell all your friends and neighbors to read it.
Light reading.
Light reading. Awesome.
Then we get the Freeport Comprehensive Plan dot final underscore use this one in all caps like that.
I will name it that. Very easy. Sam. Great. So just to jump right into it, Sam, just real quick, we need a letter from you.
Yeah, it's not for lack of thought, but...
I know, it's hard to...
Clearly, there is work to do.
So...
Can you just go to page three for a second?
Can you put them on the spot and tell when you need that letter?
That would be helpful.
Nope.
Before the council meeting, yes.
You're missing one planning board member.
I had a feeling that was the answer.
Is it Bonnie?
Oh, it's me.
Oh, yeah, the 15th. The 15th.
When I opened it, that was the person.
What time is that meeting? 6:00 PM, so you knew by like five?
I looked at it, and I was like, um, well, can I?
What happened to you? What happened to you?
I don't know. I fell off the face.
We're talking April.
April 15.
Yeah, April 15, okay.
You have until the council.
Well, the good news is I will, it's going to have to be earlier than that.
Great.
So if you would add me, that would be great.
Yes. Bonnie, we will also get you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We had Brett's, on one of the drafts, we had Brett's title wrong. It was tough. Anyway, so to what Ben was speaking about before, really, it's additive, and we chose to elevate a few things here in the vision statement and break it up because it seemed like a large paragraph. So some of the public comments, Sam and Kyle that we were looking at are here. But one thing we did elevate in the vision statement, but also in the goals and policies, is recreation. I think we heard from a lot of people that recreation was large, not absent from the plan, but it was really absent from the future and the vision. So we added right in the first sentence, rural landscapes and recreational assets. I'll touch upon that later when we get into one of the goals where we also added recreation. I think that's, was a great suggestion, well-heard at the workshop, and that's the first thing I did the next day, is just add it into some of these elements here and breaking it up. We also, in this vision statement, talked about a thriving downtown, which I added to be a mix of home, businesses, and public spaces, just to really expand on like, what is that thriving and vibrant downtown conversation we had? I think it's important to call it out. You can't really define it fully. It's a difficult concept, but when we're talking about thriving, it's about people living and working downtown and having, you know, a nice accessible space. And we've talked a lot about that here, and we've heard a lot about that from the community. Outside of some minor reformatting and combining sentences, which we heard at the workshop, the rest of this remains mostly untouched. We did kind of elevate a little bit throughout kind of the people element. That was another comment that I found difficult in the moment to answer, but after thinking it's about the person, we're thinking about the people of Freeport, the Freeport residents, the business owners, visitors. This is a land use document mostly, but it also is kind of reflecting Freeport's values. So making sure that those values are here, including equity, responsible stewardship of resources, and strong community connections, because people really want to talk about the connection between people. People really value the Freeport community, and we tried to elevate that here in the vision statement as well. Otherwise, it's generally the same, same stuff we've been looking at, kind of keeping it narrow, but trying to elevate certain elements to it. Any comments, or I'm just going to keep on going? Great. So I didn't want to go straight into future land use, so I'm going to jump down to some of the goals and policies. Sorry, we're just going to bounce. It's the only time we're going to bounce around. So now we have the full, kind of, some of these larger goals and policies that we've discussed. But really, and just to show you some of the layouts, if this is your first time seeing it, how we kind of showed what are the goals and what are the policies. Not many goals have changed. We took some of, from the last planning board meeting, we talked about certain language. I think staff gave us some guidance on what we need to tone down, where we can beef it up. I don't remember exactly the specific changes we've made between March and April, but a lot of these languages have kind of been balanced to go update, revise, adopt, or in situations where it's not really clear, we did consider or strengthen or identify. And these are just some examples here. But the goals I do want to jump down to specifically is goal four, so the enhancing public spaces and community connection. That actually, the title goal should change because it should say enhancing public spaces, community connection, and recreational assets.
Where are we?
This is goal four in the goals and policies.
Nineteen.
On page 19, yeah. So throughout all of these goals and policies, we've really beefed up the recreation element, and so we added this last piece. We added recreation to a few others, but this last goal, I'll zoom in here, the support outdoor recreation as a year-round economic driver and community amenity, felt that it felt right, and it was a little absent from what we were looking for. And again, these are two pretty straightforward goals, nothing too specific, but also broad enough to really say like, this is what Freeport is looking for. And I think this was something that was missing from the goals and policies, so I'm glad we had some good feedback on that.
I know. You probably don't want wordsmithing.
We're here.
But can you go through the, just do a search on Wolf's Neck, just to make sure that it's spelled correctly?
You have to do that in L.L. Bean as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So I agree. However, there is some confusion, right, about which is the correct Wolf's Neck? Dave, as our resident Wolf's Neck Road, would you like to explain the discrepancies? Because like, the street signs say one thing.
I can't describe them because I'm as confused as you.
See, I don't know. Most places, I've seen apostrophe S, but most, most places, W-O-L-F-E, apostrophe S is what I've usually have seen.
The Wolf's Neck Center for, that has an apostrophe, right? Wolf's Neck Center for education and the environment?
Because I did look it up to see, yeah.
We can, we can look into it.
Thanks.
It should be consistent. It should be consistent.
You can put the brightest minds to it.
It's a, I think it's just...
I see it all the time, so...
Yeah, it's like Google thinks one thing, the street sign thinks another.
Because I live in the area.
Like Todd's Corner all over again.
Stands out.
Different spin on Todd's Corner.
So the last thing that I'm, that I'm going to specifically call out of the changes that we made relate to the future land use map, and we have, I think, a lot of the convers... I wouldn't say most, but a good portion of the conversation on, at the workshop and in some of the public comment we received has been on the desert road parcels that are on the western side of 295. We've talked about them. In theory, I think we went from no to maybe the front, and then because of LD 2003, we selected the parcels. And really, we've kind of just run with it internally at least with staff and North Star. And we felt that it was good to keep, bring forward to the workshop, and it's still in this current draft as is because we didn't really want to take it out without talking with the board and the council, especially after hearing a lot of the conversations. What I will say is that we, sorry, I'm jumping all over this document again. In the narrative, which we have kind of touched up...
Did you just reference the page numbers?
Oh, absolutely. I'm not used to the page numbers.
It's on 11.
The map's on 11, and then on page eight of the plan? That's great. I'm not, that's such a good comment. I'm not used to the, being able to reference like a page. The third paragraph on page eight kind of speaks to why these parcels were considered part of the... The third paragraph on page eight kind of speaks to why these parcels were considered part of the gateway. We heard comments at the planning board that it's, you know, creeping up on some of the more residential areas. We heard great comments saying that it's a cross from the, from a dense development already. What we were able to...
Owned industrial.
What we were able to do here is kind of talk about why we include it in this future land use map, whether it was near residential development, near public utility, existing public utilities. Someone brought up the bridge enhancement, which I thought was a great, talking about like a gateway. It's connecting, still connecting to the downtown. And we just added that in here. But I did want to have, hear your thoughts on it as the planning board.
I could be convinced to take that out. You know, I mean, it does represent undeveloped land largely over there. And, you know, I mean, that's great for the next generation maybe to be developing on that. But trying to, you know, keep everything, you know, along the Route 1 corridor, to infill some of these, you know, lots that we have here in town already would be my preference to see, you know, the, our development activity in those areas. And then, you know, down the road, yep, it's still adjacent to I-95 in 15 years when the next plan's done, or 10 years or whenever. And at that point in time, if there's need to, you know, to push into that area, then, 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 yeah, I mean, I see that, you know, there's the, the... That new development, high density development right there, you know? So that does lend, you know, you to think that, jeez, this would be a good, a good spot for another one of those as well. And I can understand that, but, you know, I can see their point, you know, what they're saying.
We got a very specific comment about that from Valley Severlin. She made a very good point, I think, about the priorities in these birth areas and that would be her last priority in that area.
Do I make the counterargument here?
Yeah.
You can. I might help you. But, yeah.
Well, I mean, well, so first, one technical question. That little bit of land that, looking at the west side on the desert roadside, why is there that little notch in that blue parcel? Is it a different lot? Is it owned by somebody different?
I think it's a funny lot shape.
I think that's a golf course.
You mean that is part of the golf course?
Yeah, it's not gonna show up too much. I think it's partly M.D.O.T. and then, so if I, can you see my mouse?
That little, that jog right there.
That little jog, I...
I think that's part of the golf course.
This is all the golf course here. And then there's one little sliver, I'm assuming it's just D.O.T. land.
Just double check because whatever is good, you know, it just seemed anomalous. Whatever, however we decide this issue, is there a reason why that wasn't treated the same?
I think it's a golf course.
I have a thought, but I'll let you answer.
Yeah, I want to, so I want everyone, if you want to, we can have Charles pull it up. But I think for this conversation, it is important to make sure we look at what we have today and what we're proposing. Because you, over what we have today, you took out all Route 1 North, impartably because it doesn't have public utilities.
Correct.
The area west of 295 has already been shrunk from the growth area is today. It is an area, unlike Route 1 North, that does have public utility available and it does have pedestrian connection. That being said, I don't think it matters. Charles has a really great explanation, which I'd love you just to kind of go into a little bit again, about the reason some of these look like a different shape is because you're following the property lines.
I have a quick comment about that or question too. So why is the parcel that Cross Tree is on now not included in this blue growth zone?
Charles?
Do you want, are you sure you want me to answer?
Charles would love that to be in there.
So one thing that we, that I learned about Freeport during the, this process is that the town charter specifically says that between Desert Road and, is it Powell Road or Durham?
I think it's Beach Hill.
Beach Hill, yeah. Between Desert Road, oops, sorry, I don't know what I just did. Between Desert Road and Beach Hill Road, so that would be up here.
I, yeah, I knew that, I guess. I just didn't see it on...
And it is in the current comp plan. And how did Cross Tree get developed?
It is in the current comp plan.
It's currently a growth area, but you can't amend the comp plan to add a growth area between that area. So this is all currently in the growth area.
It already is in the growth area.
And the charter amendment happened, I believe, in 2011 or 2012 after the comp plan was adopted.
You can't add to it, but we don't have to take it away.
I don't know that that's factually accurate. I'm not gonna question why it's currently in a growth area, but we're gonna follow the charter and we're not gonna put it in a growth area today.
That's a fine, so my only thought was like, if it could be, which it sounds like I can, so it's a moot point. But my thought was if it could be, it would make the rest, the inclusion of the rest of that look better on a piece of paper.
An action could be considering amending the charter.
Yeah, I mean, actually...
Well, but isn't it already in a growth area? Oh, but now we must take it out because of the charter?
It is in a growth area. I don't know how it got in the growth area. I don't believe it was in the growth area before the charter. Andy, our in-house historian, is looking at me like that's probably correct. We know it shouldn't be in a growth area. The charter says it can't, so we're not showing it.
But it's also...
I can't remember if they built that because it was in a growth area?
No.
That came forward with a density request that people really wanted housing apartments at the time.
I think, but that's an important point, that the fact that it's not in a, that a particular parcel is not in a growth area does not necessarily preclude development on that parcel, right? Like you can still develop a parcel.
And you can still add...
And you can still find something to be consistent with the comp plan, even if it's not in a growth area. Like there are other ways to find it.
I don't think it was ever in the growth area.
Yeah, I mean, we found, I was on the board when we found that. Maybe, was it anybody else?
Variety of housing types.
When we changed, yeah, variety of housing types. And we, the board, changed the zoning in that and said, yep, this makes sense for all these reasons. It's public utilities, it's right next to the highway. It's like, everybody says we need housing in Freeport. Here's an opportunity to get 100, whatever, units. Like, this makes sense, let's change it. And I don't even remember if it's being in a growth area or not came up.
I don't think it was.
There were plenty of other opportunities.
I mean, it was Bean's land. I don't know if it was included in the growth area because it was previously Bean's land and...
I think...
I can't remember the particulars.
I would, I would support keeping at least the southeastern parcel in the growth area in the new map. I think if it makes...
Southeast is...
Southeast, is that what I said?
Right in there.
Yeah, right there. That one.
That little...
No, the whole, sorry, the whole thing.
The whole area.
Yeah, the whole, but not the, because isn't it two parcels?
Well, that is the golf course.
Two parcels. This is all golf course land.
So of the two...
Including the notch. The notch is golf course land. Can we clarify that?
Yes. So the two parcels that are blue right now, like just where, Charles, where your pointer is, right? So one...
Those two.
Those two. The eastern, the one closer to the highway. I think if we had to pick and choose, right?
So...
That one makes sense because that's the, that's the one that's not so developed now. The other one, I think, is the L.L. Bean Distribution Center, right?
The next one is the...
The third one is...
The third one's, the railroad tracks run through it. The next one to that parcel, before you hit the railroad tracks, is their outdoor discovery area where they do flyfish and archery and sporting clays.
So if we want to...
It's already being developed for Bean.
If we want to remove those from the growth area, I don't think it's gonna make a huge difference one way or another. It's kind of my, like, it's all Bean-owned land. They are actively using the northern or western or whatever. The ones further from the highway, they are using those parcels more actively than they are the one that's closer to the highway. So I think the chances of development on those parcels is relatively lower anyway. But I also think that, I do think that that is an appropriate spot for development in town. I hear the concerns about wildlife corridors, I hear, you know. But to me, I would trade, if this were sort of like a horse trading game, I would trade a lot of other parcels for that one. And I know that's not really how this works, like, we don't get to make those choices. But I, to me, that parcel makes more sense than a lot of others in town for development. And so if there's, you know, and I also don't, I don't want to get too, because I think whether it is or is not a growth area, like we already talked about, it's only one sort of little, you know, I don't know, Bean on the scale that tips, could tip something toward development. So I'm not sure it's really gonna make that much practical difference, but I do think it, it says to people, we are open to development.
I believe it makes a big practical difference, because if it comes to pass that someone wants to develop it, if we have said that this is a growth zone, it's gonna be a lot easier than if we have not. And, you know, what I heard from the meeting last week was everybody agrees downtown first, gateway second. And then I think I heard Route 1 South third and that parcel fourth, that that would be the best order. However, the Route 1 South doesn't have parcels like that.
And also...
That is a parcel that's...
But also, the comp plan doesn't dictate the order of development.
And that's what I was gonna say, is I don't know that we can control the order anywhere.
I mean, the town, you know, we on the planning board, we are not developers. The town is not a developer, you know. I think we have relatively limited tools. There are great tools and I think we should use them. But, you know, we don't, we don't get to say, first here, you know, don't, oh, no, you can't, you can't develop that parcel that you own, that you have right title and interest to. No, you can't develop that until you go develop this other one first. I mean, we, that is way outside the scope of this document.
Correct.
So I think to the extent that we can lower barriers, we can identify areas that are appropriate to development. Even if they're not perfect, they're not perf, sure. It would be great if somebody wanted to buy that piece of land and make a wildlife corridor and develop only part of it.
Conservation Trust wants to buy it, they can go buy it.
Right, and that's what...
Logical land to develop.
And I think the other thing, and we can talk about this more later as part of the implementation table, there's a couple of implementation goals or ideas on there that suggest ways in which the town can support conservation or change subdivision ordinances to support wildlife corridors within a parcel and say, okay, you can develop this parcel and maybe get a bonus for additional units or something. If you do it in a way that allows for a wildlife corridor or if you do it in a way that allows for more open space, to me, that is a perfect parcel for that sort of development. So for those reasons, I would like to see it stay as a growth area and then I would like to see us explore other ways to make sure the growth, or at least to incentiv, I mean, we can't really make sure, but to incentivize the sorts of growth that we want and that still support the other goals of the plan.
So I just want to clarify one thing there. So our current comp plan, it did show as a growth area. Our current comp plan handled growth areas a little bit differently. It showed like village comp, or village growth area, industrial growth area. So that was shown as industrial. The current zoning there is industrial. So if you put it in a growth area, that's fine. You still can't run out and build a whole bunch of houses today. There would still need to be zoning changes amongst the list of other things.
Then we should do that. We should do that too.
Kyle has his hand.
As far as like protecting the natural, like, environment on that lot, like having it in a growth area and possibly rezoning it to allow more of like a housing development, like what you're saying, could protect more of that lot than, because if you look at the...
Because right now it could be developed as industrial park.
You could have with 70% max impervious on that lot. So with a housing development and a rezon...
I was screaming at the screen trying to have somebody point out that right now, this is a down zone that we're proposing.
So it could be, you know, a lot more concentrated development, but maybe you rezoned it in a way that protects larger parts of...
Just one more question on this, though. Do we need a growth area for industrial? Is that, no?
I don't believe you do, but I'll look to Charles and Ben. The state doesn't make you break it out those ways, correct?
That's correct. The designations that they are looking for in the map are growth or rural. And the narrative part of this is really a description of the town's vision for the character and types of uses and those kinds of things. But it certainly, this would allow for industrial uses to remain if that's something that the town decides.
Assuming the town, and I heard the town wants some industry. And that's a logical place to put it. Incidentally, Bean's Distribution Center, is that fully built out or could they...
That was an industrial park that we voted on in the 90s.
Right, but there's pads there, aren't there?
But Bean's bought the whole thing.
Oh, they bought the whole thing. I see.
FEDC brought it forward back then. They were the developer per se. And then they took it through the board. You know, I remember I was on the council in the 90s and we voted just to, you know, so they could plow the road. They put the road in and they wanted to show lots. And Bean's basically stepped up and said, we'll take the whole thing. And that's sort of how it worked. I don't think Bean's wanted to be the developer. I think they got FEDC to be the developer.
But then, but then they are the developer and if they wish, they still have land there where they could create pads.
I'm sure they could create some pads there if they wanted to. I don't think they want to. I mean, I don't know. I just can't, when they went into the whole thing...
Should we have a vision for if they're, if we need those, where do they go?
I mean, the thought was there would be some industry come to town when they develop that park.
Right.
There would be lots there for small manufacturers and other stuff. And it didn't happen because they took the whole thing. And I don't know if that was because Bean's didn't want to be the fall guy up front or...
Well, this supports why you keep it in a growth area and then we can decide later what to do with it.
I mean, yeah.
Does anyone have feedback other than Sam? Because I, I feel like we're not getting good, clear feedback on what to do here.
If we had like a straw vote of what are the three options? Take it all out, leave it all in, or...
And you did have some public comment on this issue in your packet.
Oh, we did. That said, take it out. We know that.
What's the board's sense on this? If I, if I may put individual, I mean, everybody knows where I stand.
You know where I am, so.
Well, I agree with you that we, you know, we can't determine who's gonna want to develop where. And for that reason, I would keep the incentives everywhere. So I would, I would leave it in the growth area.
Yeah, I mean, I could go either way on it really, like I said before.
How persuasive was I, Dave?
Yeah.
Not fully persuasive, it sounds like.
Not bad, not bad, but I still, you know, I still have this, you know, I still have, you know, I look around town here and I see a lot of lots that are like, man, why can't we do something different there, you know? And so I want to see the development go on those lots. That's what I, that's, that's my, my feeling.
So Sam's vote was for east of the railroad tracks to stay in. Wayne was to keep it all in. I'm actually not sure which one Mitch landed on.
I want to keep it all in.
All in. David, you're saying all in?
Sure.
Yes, all in?
I don't care one way or the other. I mean, obviously, I'd like to see the two, the two that are being used right now, certainly. The Distribution Center needs to be in and the Fog Farm needs to be in. The extra lot on the corner, I can go either way.
I mean, another...
You heard what you just said, which is the two outliers have to be in because there are, so then...
Already being used.
And I think, I mean, the wildlife corridor part of the interior lot is, I mean, it's a little bit of a dead-end wildlife corridor now because it goes right into the Cross Tree Apartments across the street. So, and a MDOT facility and like...
They have a little...
If there's a way to support a wild, like, but that's, that's my point, I guess, about other ways to, like, I think it should be a growth area. I think we should try to incentivize development in appropriate locations and I think we should use other tools. Like my, to put some of my sort of bigger picture cards on the table, I think that we as a board, or let me say, the Freeport zoning in general, we need to do a better job of getting it out of the way. We need to allow, and we've felt that for a long time. It's a hard lift to actually make those changes. But to the extent that we can allow for easier development with fewer hurdles and then use other sorts of, you know, if the town is involved in a helpful way rather than like a regulatory way, like a, hey, how can we help you developer figure out how to put in a wildlife corridor, rather than you must meet these requirements and show them by filling out these forms and do this map? And like, that all adds cost to a project. If there are other ways that we can suggest adding wildlife corridors or conserving space with, you know, incentives that are easier to meet, that's how I think we should be doing this. Not by trying to, you know, remove things from growth areas and put additional sort of like restrictions and oversight on them. So that's, that's my position.
We all settled on this one. Can I jump to my, my little complaint down on Route 1?
You need to run the thing right to the river because there's a business on the end. So that growth area needs to go right to the river.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that little section down there.
Is that a muddy rudder?
No, 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 that's the cafe and the Yodds behind the cafe. And they're on sewer and water.
That's western, is that what it is?
That's the cafe.
That's western and the cafe.
You can do that easily, yeah.
Yep. Because that's sewer, water and gases. I think they have gas here, but I know they got sewer and water there.
At that point, there's nothing between Route 1 and the interstate, right? It's right, they're right next to each other.
Yeah, and I think it's really undevelopable on that little stretch in between.
And you can't develop across street because it's too narrow.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't start to develop across street till you get to the, to the Indian. That's the only, that's where you have to start.
Yeah, okay.
Used to be a trailer park there, but
Really?
Yeah. There's five trailers there already crossing the Indian.
Hmm.
Where, what is that, boat?
Huh?
Yeah, never mind. I don't want to get into that.
Did you guys have other comments on the pink or blue, or are we good? You got what you needed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
I'm comfortable with the, with the pink part. I know we didn't talk about that, but
Yeah, I think, I think Kyle and Caroline can speak to those boundaries if needed, but I think they're pretty defined by existing zoning, the downtown vision plan, so we tried to make sure that everything lined up, avoiding certain, I think, even avoiding conserve lands, things that are zone rural, so we tried to map that. And again, I think one thing I did want to mention, uh, these all are parcel bound because, because of LD 2003, uh, the growth areas, you can do more. So it's the affordable housing density bonus, uh, multiple units on a lot if you have the requirement. So those require the growth area to be parcel bound now. Uh, so that's kind of our approach and why we, you know, went from just the first 200 feet of the desert road parcels to the entire parcel, uh, just because it's new state law, so.
Even if the tax financing is different.
Sure. Um, so, that's really on the only highlights I wanted to bring to it, based on it. Um, there's a couple new sections throughout the plan. Um, we obviously added quotes. We brought some of the inventory chapter data, like an example here, to say that if we're going to be priorit- like, we have a goal about eelgrass. Just in case you didn't read, eelgrass has mostly vanished. So we were trying to balance that. We grabbed some quotes from vision surveys, some quotes from, uh, the workshops, some of the posted notes, just to, you know, add, to say like, hey, we're doing this, but we heard from the people. Uh, this, there's nothing really else I wanted to highlight too much. Ben, is there anything that you can think of that we chatted about earlier or have pretty changed? There's mostly word spitting, some of the goals and policies.
Right, and, um, I think some of the, the formatting, uh, work that's been done, was coming out at the last planning board meeting about trying to like, reach into and kind of bridge to the inventory chapters, and the quotes are really to bridge to the public participation work.
Quote, just to confirm what my suspicion is, the quotes are all from the public workshops, right?
Correct.
Does it say that somewhere? And I just missed it.
Or the visiting survey.
Right.
Okay.
They're, they're from the public. They're, they're either from the survey or, or things that we've seen on posted notes, uh, over the last
You might want to note where they come from somewhere.
That's, that's what this is, you're saying.
Inside cover, does it note that somewhere?
Not the quotes on the side, but we can add that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good little
Um, like, this one, for example, it's from the Freeport Climate Action Plan.
That one is noted.
Um, and one thing to note, which I think is a really cool, uh, North Start team member, I just want to make sure, a lot of the pictures from that, from this plan are, obviously, this is from the first workshop, but many of the photos in this plan are from the Our Town, a community self project, but Meeting House Arts, um, kind of, and their partners ran, so they shared their photos with us. Um, they're all sourced from different people, so people will one day see, some people will see their photos in the plan, which is a nice little touch, uh, good idea on our
Say, somebody had photos of town that they thought would be appropriate, is there any chance of submitting them for inclusion in the plan, or are you guys like done with photos?
If you, if you really want to send us some photos, we can see if we can make it work.
There's one that needs to be replaced.
Asking for, asking for a
Is it the Oak Hill apartment one, or?
It's, it's the, it's, uh
You have a page number?
Freeport Today, whichever, wherever that is. Oops.
What's, what page number is that?
I'm, I'm looking for it. I don't know why that's not, I'm calling
The boot?
Yeah, the boot. That is not Freeport Today.
That's true.
Think about that.
True.
That boot is gone.
All right.
Maybe Sam has a picture we can put up.
Sam's got a great picture put there, I think.
It's gonna be a picture of an excavator with the longest arm you've ever seen hammering
that, you know, hammering that courtyard to bits.
Um, so, the, the last bit of tonight, uh, I, I did want to talk a little bit about implementation of the plan because we've only really discussed it at a high level.
Could I?
Yeah.
I gotta pull you back for one second.
Absolutely.
You probably have made all these notes, but just a couple other notes from the, from last, from the workshop
Absolutely.
That I just want to make sure you caught, uh, which was, I thought it was a good point to amplify arts, and I think it's already in there, but amplification seemed right, and it almost connects with this recreation, because what I, I saw all that, everybody was sort of saying something that I think we've all thought, which is Freeport needs a new, new, and something new. You know, it was a retail destination, now it's not, so what is it? And it, it already has so much recreation, and if we added recreation or solicited more recreation and more arts, that starts to give it a character. So I think it's super important to the vision. Um, and I guess that was it.
Yeah, we, we went through and did add bits and pieces on art, uh, even from the feedback we had before. Um, so we, we added references to public art, just tried to beef up some of that, or like, really make those, that language around the art a little bit stronger. Um, so it now has, it's a full policy, invest, continuing events against arts and culture events, um, creative and cultural enterprises, galleries, promoting downtown events and festivals.
Oh, the other one that felt like it needed a little bit of, of bumping up was connectivity, which again is sort of, it's in, it's in, it's in 10 places in this
Yeah, I, I think, I think we
What that means and what we're committed to doing, and there's a lot there.
Yeah, we, that wasn't one of the biggest things that we had to change. I think when you read through the full plan, it's there. Uh, it's really scattered in almost every goal.
Recreational trail connectivity.
Trail connectivity, ADA, all the things that make, you know, bike, bike walk, all that stuff.
I guess depending how you read it, it gets pretty top line billing, and number four, enhancing public spaces and community connection.
Oh, right, community connection, good, okay.
I think, I could see how you could read that as more on the like cultural, social connection rather than physical connection, but I think you could also read it the other way, so.
Physical and social community connections, right.
I think those are really important points. I do think they do have
They're there.
They do hold enough, um, space in the plan.
Can I give you any word spitting things?
Well, yeah, word spitting is great.
Did you have something first? Page 25, the middle goal.
Mm-hmm.
The second one there, prioritize, et cetera, intro, transportation plan.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Let me know when you're ready for the next.
Oh, ready for the next? This is because I forgot her name.
Twenty, yeah. Oh, you claimed, you claimed that. Uh, 28, our sentence, action plan, in. I don't believe this belongs there. And the last sentence.
It's missing or an extra word.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, last sentence, remain, I don't think a
Core priorities for the town's future.
Should just be remain core priorities?
Cool, yeah, yeah.
I don't know how far we've gotten now where you're going, but I think
I'm planning to just send you my comments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not bothered.
Is that what you would like?
Yeah, that, that'll work, too. If you can get us some of those comments, word spitting errors, or
I just have a few, if I, you don't mind, as we go along.
And I, I think, you know, again, ultimately, kind of calling back to what, uh, Caroline had mentioned, is, is that, um, we've got a couple weeks, uh, before we have to like, solidify this thing for a submission, hopefully, so we do have some room to, to make some adjustments and corrections as we go. So if, if those things come now, they can get incorporated into the, the version that we hopefully submit to the state in about two weeks. Uh, if they come later, I think a lot of people are going to need some time to kind of sit with this and take some time to read through it. So if we hear those things over the coming months, we're gonna take those and, and make sure that they're ready for the public hearing version.
Yeah.
But it's okay that I give them to you tonight?
Uh, if you want to give them to us on later point
Depending on how much time we have.
Uh, because I'm, I'm
Yeah, I just, if we're going along and it works out, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I've checked off the ones that I have.
We're, we're jumping into the, we're gonna jump into the implementation next, and that's probably it for now, uh, unless there's other sections of the plan people wanted to
Could I just pick two more notes?
Sure.
Are we sh- I'm on the same page, 25. Are we sure we want to, I know you've gone in the conversation of will do, or will consider, or, you know, but it's the will consider climate-related impacts in all infrastructure decisions and investments. That strikes me as too strong and could become a straight, a noose around the town. That's saying, I mean, you know, now, the word consider, I realize, is soft. So, we thought, we considered it and we rejected it.
I mean, we did just consider concerns about wildlife corridors and other stuff in the growth areas, and decided to
Right, not to. So if you think that we can, I just don't want to require, have say, if you have somebody say, well, the plan said, we have a 10-year plan, we must buy an electric police car. I don't think that's, should be here that strong.
Agreed.
Yeah, um, and I think the, the, the way I read the current wording is, is that the consider, just like with
Think about, will
streets policies, I think the, the town of Freeport does have one, where it's like, we, we want to make sure
If you remove the word all, I think it might give yourself a little more room.
Okay. How do, how do other folks feel about that?
Yeah, this may be a minority view.
Which, where exactly?
Right here.
Oh, no, I'm with you.
So on page 25, I'll zoom in, it says, this, this goal is Freeport will consider climate-related impacts in all infrastructure decisions and investments.
You see the, the
Oh, it's not, it's not one of the, it's on the left.
I'm not, I'm not against the goal, I'm just
It can be expensive, you know?
It could be expensive, it's just
It's got dollar signs all over it.
That's my fear.
Um, hold on, give me a minute.
I know it's in the climate action plan, but
I think this might already be one of the council goals for the year, so let me
I, I guess my counterpoint to that, too, is if we are considering climate-related, if we aren't, maybe to run the counterpoint, if we aren't considering climate-related impacts, then we run the risk of costing ourselves a lot more money if we're not thinking about, you know, down the road. I, I would see that, this is not a hill I'm gonna die on. However, I am not opposed to leaving it the way it is either, because I think if there is a, an investment, like, if the town is investing in infrastructure, if there's something, I think we should be keeping climate in mind as we're doing that, just because I think it is a reality of the world we're living in, and a lot of times it might be like, we're gonna think about, you know, this, oh, this road's not gonna flood because of these reasons, and all the storm runoff goes that way over here and that way over here, so this one's fine. We thought about it, it's fine, don't worry about it. And whereas in other places, it might make a big difference, you know, if we don't think about it, and, you know, sea levels go up a foot.
I'm not dying on this hill either, I just thought it
I would just add that the word consider is not, is not that forceful a word. I mean, it doesn't necessarily imply large cost.
Yeah, but I do think, I do think that is an area of investment, that's worthy investment, is considering climate, climate impacts and infrastructure.
I, I get more, I get more excited about, upset with accelerate EV adoption. I mean, I don't, the first, the first paragraph, I don't know why the town should be accelerating EV adoption among Freeport residents. It's really, you know, if they want to buy an EV machine, that's fine. You know, I got nothing against them, but I don't know why we should be promoting the acceleration of them. I mean, that's, that's a private decision.
So I'm gonna, Andy's too fast. I'm gonna go back to the one Mitch brought up. So one of the goals the council just considered, they accepted FSAB's recommendations for climate action was use the vulnerability assessment to prioritize investments for at-risk public infrastructure and community assets, and incorporate climate projections into planning.
So that seems eminently sensible.
Which is what that's
I guess this is
hitting on.
What it's hitting on, it just, all right.
Yeah, I, again, like, when we talk about implementation evaluation, too, there are, this is goal setting, so like, even if, I don't want to say even, in the case that we said Freeport will get one electric, uh, electric police car, um, that, if you, the town can't, simply can't afford it and it was in the plan, I think it wouldn't necessarily need to happen anyway. I think a lot of this, you know, because we're going to be setting our priorities, we're setting our, the, we, the Freeport's, uh, goal setting and prioritizing the implementation every year, priorities change, money, the, the conversation about dollars is kind of at the core of that. And we have, again, when we go to, and we talked about this, that was a big concern of everybody, and that was a lot of the language here. In the implementation, we have a specific section about, the goal setting has to be, you know, fiscally responsible. So a lot of this is just saying, big picture is not necessarily binding, it's a, it's more of a guiding point for a lot of these, and if, when you're looking at actions to do with the council in the future, and you say, oh, do we want to upgrade stormwater management systems this year by retrofitting aging culverts? Like, I don't know if we have the funding, there might be grants otherwhere, but, you know, maybe we can look at the climate-related impacts and infrastructure investments. It's a, it's a really just part of a larger, like, direction of moving, and it's in, parts of it are in the climate action plan, parts of it are already part of the, you know, at the forefront of the council. So I do think that, you know, the wording can get, we can get bogged down into that type of wording, but ultimately, the implementation evaluation, that part of the plan is really the, the wall. It says, you know, we have to be fiscally responsible when we're doing, when we're implementing this plan. Um, so if it's not feasible this year, then we can, you know, prioritize it in the medium term.
Could I make a very simple recommendation about the EV one, which goes to something I think we talked about last week, which is, I know these are not prioritized, but by putting the EV one right at the top, it just sort of, it makes it seem like a high priority. So can we just slide it down the list?
Yeah, I would just say these are all straight from the climate action plan.
Can we just slide it down the list?
Yeah, absolutely.
Man, why do we have to
It's there.
Why do we have to accelerate it? Why is that word in there?
I usually agree with everything you say, Andy, but in this case, I disagree.
It's all right.
Yeah, the, the transition to EVs is one of the most important air pollution-reducing technologies that exists, and many municipalities are putting in charging stations for their residents and doing all kinds of things to encourage the transition to EVs, so
Yeah, I see it as broadly, I think the, you know, eventually, the market, hopefully will get us, will, will help to push us in that direction. Anyway, the part of this, I, I agree with you, Andy, I don't think the town should be spending a lot of money on this, and certainly not like money to incentivize individual residents to buy EVs, like, I would not support that. But I would support if the town wants to take, do a study and say, hey, if all our police cars were EVs, that would actually make a ton of sense, because they're not driving that many miles in a day, right? They're driving around Freeport, they could charge every night, like, those sorts of things, those sorts of decisions that the town could make about municipal operations, where an EV might make sense, maybe like, the code enforcement officer has a EV or something because they're driving around and, and, but it's parked at the town hall where there could be a charger, and maybe that saves the town money over time. I think those sorts of decisions would be, would be great to look at.
It also, it also may not be town budget money, you know, a couple years ago, Freeport gave out all kinds of money for electrification of all kinds of appliances, but I think the money was funneled through, you know, through a federal grant.
I think this is a good point to talk about, you know, the entirety of the plan. This is the environmental workshop, and in the public participation appendix for the environment workshop, one of the activities at the environment workshop was to rank the climate action plan goals. So we put all the goals out to all the, all the members who were there, and those goals were listed, but Freeport being an EV was one of the top goals.
Freeport what?
Freeport as an EV-ready and friendly community.
That's fine, but I don't think we should promote accelerate
Accelerate says we're gonna
That's right, accelerate EV adoption among Freeport residents, and I just don't, I mean, if we want to be EV-ready, if we want to be EV-friendly, I'm fine with that. I just don't think the word accelerate EV adoption among Freeport residents. I think we should be neutral about what people drive. If, and I think you can say, EV's good for the environment, whatever you want to say, but I don't think that, I don't, just don't like that word, accelerate EV adoption, because I think somebody will look back at it saying, hey, said we had to accelerate this, what are we gonna do to accelerate it?
Maybe, could we tweak it
Why is that on the town?
Could we tweak it to say, like, support EV, yeah, support EV, infrastructure in town for visitors and
We, we can change it, but, and again, I, I don't want to, I'm not gonna die on We can change it, but, and again, I don't want to, I'm not going to die on this hill, but this goal, this policy of this goal, of the resilient infrastructure and built environment, this goal is to implement the Climate Action Plan, these are goals from the Climate Action Plan. And while I don't disagree with that accelerate means XYZ, but in the context of the policy saying, implement the recommendations from the climate plan...
What about just support?
But we, I don't want to create two competing goals and two plans, like, I mean, I'm fine with it.
You're trying to use their words.
It's just to be consistent between these plans, because our intention was to make the comp plan kind of speak to the Climate Action Plan and the Downtown Vision Plan. We have the connections between the two, and I think if, in the situation where the Climate Action says accelerate, comp plan just says support, then you kind of go into the conflict, it's like, we have two plans saying two different things. So that's just be my point, and again, I'm not trying to, I don't disagree with either, it's not mine, but for consistency between the two and the intent behind writing it, I would just caution having two different, because then you get into, you could get into a more difficult...
That case, and I agree with Sam about sliding it down, so it doesn't seem like it's top...
I think, I think if we slide it down, that would, that would be good, and then if there's a way to keep it consistent while de-emphasizing, I do, I hear Andy's point about the, you know, I guess the thing that we don't, we don't want the perception that the town should, you know, like subsidize EVs for its residents or something like that.
Well, it doesn't say that.
It says accelerate, what are you going to do to accelerate?
I don't want to get, I don't want to get too far.
The thing that jumps to me immediately is like a requirement in your all-street parking ordinance that says, whenever you do a new development, you know, for every, whatever 10, 20 parking spaces you develop, like, one of them has to be an EV. So it's the, you know, private entity, the developer, putting it in, but, you know, I've seen it other places, like, that's what would immediately come to mind for me with a phrase like that.
And I would totally support that kind of thing.
So like all the other goals and policies in here, this is guidance that the Planning Board and the Town Council can lean on to help with prioritization and goal-setting in the future. It's not, and I don't think anyone used these exact words, but, you know, I sensed some trepidation around, like, you know, we're going to handcuff ourselves or paint ourselves into a corner with, with the goals that are too precise or too directive, that are going to end up costing us in ways that we maybe can't foresee right now. That is not what a comp plan is about. It's, it's not to paint yourself into a corner, it's to provide guidance and options for how to present these things that are in alignment with the community's vision.
Can we just move it down and just move on?
Yep.
Can I go down one last rabbit hole, please?
If it doesn't involve EVs, sure.
It's back on the vision statement. You inserted the word equity, and I know where it came from, I saw the conversation about social vision. I just wonder what that word means, and if anybody knows what it means, and if, it's not a word I would choose to put in there, but it may be the sense of the community to have that in there, but I don't know what it means.
Page you on?
I am on page six.
I think...
And that word was added, the word equity, and it is a hot-button word.
It's a hot-button word if you just say equity and leave it at that. I think if, if there were, and I don't even want to try to come up with one now...
We talked about diversity of lifestyles, welcoming community.
Equitable something could be a good...
Equitable what? I don't know what it means.
Yeah, I agree that inserting the word equity without a little bit more specificity could raise flags. Again, I'm not going to die on this hill.
Economic diversity, that seems like something that everybody could wrap their head around and say, that's sort of what we mean.
But is it, it's in the values that define Freeport, so I would say, keep it including whatever, whatever values we want to highlight here.
I don't know what equity means as a value, except that it's a charged word.
It can mean anything.
It can mean anything. I think we do want, everybody wants to have a more economically diverse, to the extent that we can, town. And that is sort of about equity, I think that's kind of what they mean. I don't want to disrespect the sense of the community, that did bring it up several times, but I don't know if that's the right word.
Why don't we, I don't think we're going to fix this.
Okay, we don't have to fix it now, but I want to flag it.
I think it's a good flag, I think it's a good flag. I think there's, there's going to be a way that we can insert, it's probably going to get a little bit longer, but good thing we have this little blank space at the bottom of the page. I bet, I bet we could find like three or four words or a different phrasing there that would get to the sentiment with a little bit better specificity. Does that make sense?
It's good to add the sentiment, because it was a clear voice.
What is the sentiment, is the question? What are the, what's the value that that sentiment was looking to us? Not separate of the word equity, but what in what they said could we capture as a Freeport value?
Some of the people that were speaking were speaking specifically about the constellation of issues associated with DEI and New Mainers and all sorts of stuff like that, which I don't think belongs in here. But I think the community broadly would support economic diversity, you know, opportunity, things like that.
Do you think the word opportunity is a, is a replacement that could be fitting here?
I mean, I think it, we probably, at some point, it is going to be a discussion, I wonder if the sort of specificity of saying, you know, opportunity regardless of, you know, socioeconomic status or race, I mean, those sorts of, I think that's...
Social equity?
Like, how specific do we get with...
Yeah, I'm just trying, because like, I'm at the point where I, I also get the sentiment, but really, we don't have, I don't...
You need a word.
We're here now.
What's wrong with economic diversity instead of equity?
I'm not saying that's wrong.
Economic diversity, I think, will get you there, and people will say you did this, and...
I would propose we just replace it with that.
Easy.
Economic and cultural diversity.
Yeah.
There you go.
I like that.
That's good.
I think having the cultural bit in there is a good...
Good.
Absolutely.
I vote for that.
Good.
Me, too.
Perfect, easy change.
Oh, good, done.
I suspect that's not the last we will hear about, about that particular phrase, but I think that's a good, I think it's a good change for now, and I...
I just didn't want to take another stab at it, so.
Me neither, well, you heard me not, I don't, I don't know if I'm going to be able to say it any better.
I hope not. I think I'm on the back end of it.
What page are we on now?
So we're jumping down, and this is kind of that final exercise, I can't get the page numbers. Thank you, Kyle.
What'd you say, 40?
Implementation?
Forty-one.
Yep.
Not really. No, it's not the mouse, it's the program. So this is the implementation evaluation process, kind of gets paired with the implementation table that you may have grabbed when you walked in, or what Caroline and Kyle had kind of alluded to in the email earlier this week. This is language kind of working straight from Caroline, so if you have any question about the implementation process that we're outlining here, I think it's kind of a combination of the Planning Board and the Town Council, and I offer Caroline a chance to kind of speak more to it.
I'll just quickly say something about the page before, page 40.
Yeah.
I wouldn't put in, I wouldn't put an acronym like DTV in a headline, because a lot of people won't.
Yes, I have, I have that comment written down, too. It's not spelled out in the, it's spelled out in the section, but not the title.
Okay.
So...
On page 40?
Yeah, just like the title of Climate and DTV Connections, it should be Climate Action Plan and Downtown Vision Connections.
So with regards to implementation, we had a big implementation list that came out of the Downtown Vision, and we had another big implementation list that came out of the Climate Action Plan. We've learned a lot from those experiences, and I think with the Climate Action Plan, resulting from the council discussion, what came out of it was to put into the plan that the council and the Sustainability Advisory Board will meet annually at the start of the year, like when you normally workshop, to set, or to talk about priorities for the year, which is what I was just reading to you from. FSAB met, they brought a list of priorities. When we were going through those, it was interesting, because as you guys have talked about, priorities are going to change every day depending on, you know, what's going on, funding, staff resources, grants available. So we liked that strategy, we felt like it worked good, it also keeps open communication, it has the council involved in the implementation, and they're really the ones that can assign duties for other people, like, we can't do that. I feel like it is a way to keep the implementation more front and center, not so hidden, kind of like the current comp plan, it was like, hey, what have we done, who did what, there wasn't really a great way to track it. And then every three years, your town planner will prepare a more substantive update, which we'll have, and share with the community. So we talked about this a lot, and we talked about timelines and assigning who does what, and the verdict was kind of like, we'd really rather meet once a year, but we know the state's going to require us to put some general timeframes or priorities and say who's going to do what. So what we're looking to the Planning Board for is to get some feedback based upon everything you've heard. We wanted each member to come tonight with five items that they picked as short-term priorities and five medium-term. We're going to collect that tonight, we're not, everyone gets a say, you have all been participating in the process and heard from the community, we're not going to walk out of here only with five, we wanted everyone to take their knowledge and bring five of each of those tonight. So we will go through, once we get that feedback, staff will go through, we'll look at what's left, see if anything else we feel like needs to get put on the short and medium, and then we will populate the column of who, from Board and Committee or Staff, those are most likely assigned to. So it's a starting point, so we have a baseline, but we know that annually, the vision is that you'd be meeting with the council to talk about these, and of course, some of them that come under your purview, you'd be more involved in your work plan. Did I miss anything there, Kyle?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to touch on, Mitch, your email earlier, you know, I think it's, when we meet annually, you know, you could come up with a list of priorities for the year, you know, if we come out with, and say, in the implementation specifically, there's X number of short-term goals, that doesn't mean the board is specifically tied to only those strategy policies in the next two, three years, you know, and those annual meetings, you know, things could come up, you could expand on that list. So there would be nothing on a year-to-year basis to stop you from looking at, you know, maybe something that was a long-term, it doesn't seem super pertinent right now, but a year from now, all of a sudden, it's a huge thing, and the board wants to address it. There'd be nothing really preventing the board from taking that up sooner. Also, I think that some of these strategies, like specifically ones about, and there's one, and I think the balance and growth about, you know, housing, or like looking at zoning and building heights and minimum lot sizes and all that, it's a really general strategy that could speak to, like, a number of specific policy changes. So we could use that one strategy to do like multiple different policy amendments over a couple of years. So even though it's only like one short-term recommendation here, it could influence, you know, five, 10 different plans later on.
Yeah, that was my point, because if you tried to do it off of this list, you know, you'd have the same thing four times, and really, it's just one thing, make the housing changes.
Or there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of things where you think, okay, if we're going to do this, it would make a ton of sense to do this other thing at the same time. I mean, I, as I was going through this, I kind of came up with this preposterous sort of nomenclature for myself of like, all right, there's different categorizations, right? There's short, there's medium, there's long, there's how hard is it to implement, and then there's who's doing the implementation. And I hear Caroline telling me and us that we're not going to decide who does the implementation, but that still sort of affected my thinking on it, as it was like, ah, somebody else's problem. So my, my higher, the things that I selected tended to be Planning Board issues.
So to be fair, how we envision this working is we're going to go right down the line, and everyone's going to get their turn to tell us their five that they feel are short-term and five they feel are long-term. Did everybody come with a list, or do we need a few minutes to look over what we have?
Well, since I'm at the end of the line, we should be fine.
I can go down.
And we will let Charles pick the order.
David, you seem like you were ready. You're always prepared, and we'll go to your right, we'll go stage right, but...
All right, so what I did was I went through most of these, and I, much like Sam, probably came up with my own nomenclature, so like, hard, heavy green is, you know, near-term, and, you know, there's a yellow for a medium-term and a red for, for long-term, and then there's orange for kind of in-between, long-term, medium-term, and lighter greens, so, you know, when you see this, because I'll send it to you, that's how it lays out. But I think, for me, you know, on the, the near-term stuff was, really had to do with housing and zoning changes and, you know, the Downtown Vision Plan-type, type implementation. So, you know, for example, FL 9.1, streamline zoning and permitting to support housing development in the downtown village area, you know, etc., you know, it goes on from there, that I think is a near-term priority. Let's, oops.
Was that, can you reference my number, or that I fit?
Yeah, that was nine, what did I say?
Nine point one.
Nine one.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a short-term. Okay.
You know what page that's on?
That was the last page, I'm ready to log, because I had more, more near-term there. So I'm just going to do near-term right now. Offer development incentives for infill projects, that's FL 6.2, that is another one I thought could be near-term. Support, let's see, this is, this is FL 2.1, using the descriptions provided, future lenders, narrative maintain and act, amend local ordinances as appropriate, clearly define desired scale, intensity, location, and future development, et cetera.
What was that?
That was, that was FL 2.1, that's a near-term. FL 6.1, Freeport will target locate, locate future development within identified growth areas, the strategy there will be revised zoning regulations in downtown village gateway and Route 1 South, so that's another short-term, FL 6.1.
Who's he flashing for?
I don't know.
Is, your mic is on, right?
Yep.
Okay.
It's on.
Yeah.
So Dave's mic is on.
Let's see.
Do you just need to be closer to it, maybe?
Perhaps. Let's see.
You guys like tallying this, is that how this is working?
Kyle and I are...
Yeah, we're, Caroline and I are going to fill this out.
Let's see, HS 6.3, reduce minimum lot sizes, yard setbacks and frontage requirements to allow small foot development, that's, that's a near-term item that I had. Support the economic development activity, the community desires, this is EC 1.1, that's another short-term, 1.1 and 1.2 are short-term.
Can you guys read that?
E8. Page, yeah, eight, yep. Let's see. You know, I mean, this is because I've heard a lot about it in town, not really my necessarily first priority, but apparently it's important in town. AF 4.1, implement the Climate Action Plan. NR, this is page five, NR 4.2, 4.3, oh no, yeah. Revise zoning regulations to direct growth into designated areas by allowing higher-density development, and then the second one, NR 4.3, is update seven division requirements to further encourage conservation-oriented design in rural areas to conserve open space and census habitats. So that's, that's funny, I think, for, well, there's an...
Were those all short-term?
Those are all short-term.
Okay.
I can go to medium-term now if you'd like.
Can you just, sorry, the one I missed, I've now numbered all of my pages, can you...
I have all of them if you...
I just need page eight, that was the only one I missed.
Page eight, page eight was EC 1.1 and 1.2.
Got it.
Let's see, medium-term, you know, you know, and this is, throwing a dart at the board at some point here, but FL, this is, I'm going back to the bottom, page 20, FL 9.2, redesign Main Street to prioritize pedestrian cyclists and slow-moving vehicles, including wider sidewalks, et cetera. Let's see. Again, you know, these could be, anyways, this is page 19, FL 6.3, prioritize infrastructure upgrades and growth areas by lining sidewalk, water, sewer, road improvements. You know, FL 8.1, this could be near-term or long-term, I mean, medium-term, but enhance pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure with investments in sidewalks, crosswalks separated by lanes, off-street trail connections within, between existing neighborhoods. This is page 13, RC 5.3, increase bike rats, repair stations or in bike infrastructure at high-traffic locations. at high-traffic locations. I mean, you know, I've got, like, these marked in some way. You know, the RC 4.1 on page 12, expand trail connectivity, speaking to recreation, heard a lot about that, going through the process, install clear signage and maps through Freeport, unifying all parks, trails, waterfront sites, et cetera, that's RC 4.3.
Five?
I've gone through 5, I'm sure. I mean, yeah, so if you can move on, it's fine.
Don't go to me next, because I'm gonna cross-reference your numbers, since she's such a stickler.
Bonnie?
Me? Wow, oh. Um, I'm just gonna give you the numbers, I don't, I'm not gonna read. So, short-term, I had WR 5.1, page 3, do you need to know?
WR 5.1, page 3?
Yep.
Okay.
Page 4, NR 1.3.
1.3 or 2.3?
Oh, sorry, where did I say, page 5?
Yep.
Sorry, I was moving on.
I got page 4.
4. NR 1.3.
Okay.
Yeah. I just hope I've got them all. Page 9, EC 5.3. I think I'm ending up with six of these, but anyway. Page 10, HS 4.1. Page 10, HS 6.1, I kind of thought of those together, but, um, page 13, RC 6.1. For me, it was a big one, because I, two people stood out as far as what they said about accessibility and.
And these are all your short-term?
Yes, I think that's, I think I have one more, so I think I have six total.
I have six.
Oh, you already have, well, I think I combined those two.
Oh, okay.
Page 20, FL 9.1, that's my last one for that.
FL 9.1. Did you have medium?
Yep. Uh, page 2, WR 3.1, didn't give you that before, did I?
No.
Okay. Making sure I show this one, yeah, all right. Let's see. Page 10, HS 6.2. Page 15, PF 4.1.
P as in Sam?
F as in Frank.
All right, PF what?
4.1. And my last two, page 19, both of them are on 19, FL 6.3 and FL 8.1.
So a couple overlapped, but mostly unique.
All right, ready for the next one, North Star? Yes?
Andrew.
Well, I didn't do mine right, but that's all right. I'll have to go through and reorient them. I just made notes on what I liked and what I didn't like. I made comments.
That works.
I'll get reoriented and pass it in later. Uh, let's see, page 6, AF 2.1, support farming and forestry.
And are these short, or are these in no particular?
I didn't do that, that was.
Okay, that's fine.
Made comments.
We can go through, okay.
Next page is page 8, which was MR 4.1, protect, maintain, warranted marine resources, fishing, farming, recreation. Let's see. Page 9, I guess next page was EC 6.1, support robust economic development efforts, and right under that, HS 1.1, which was some housing and economic development. Next page is 10, downtown vision, HS 4.1, and then HS 6.3, reduce lot sizes. Next page is 12, RC 3.1, maintain major point of public access for boating, fishing. RC 7.1, support some outside recreation. Page 17, support downtown vision, EL 1.1. Let's see. Then I had a comment on page 19, which is FL 6.2, offer develop incentives, and I just wrote, maybe depends on what the offer is, I mean, I don't know what we should be offering. I had, let's see, same thing, last page, FL 9.1, downtown vision, you know, and the parking thing, gateway growth areas, minimum parking requirements, and my comment was, whose parking are we using, which is what we got to earlier.
So was that just 9.1, or is there another one there?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll give you this when I'm done.
10.1 was the parking.
10.1 and 9, 9.1 and 10.1. I mean, I just wrote a question, whose parking are we using? You know, talked about continually monitor minimum parking requirements, which I'm also, you know, figuring out whose were. And I had some comments on some other ones here. Report will protect rural areas and productive land, working lands, require conservation subdivision, and, you know, I think we have to be careful of how we regulate rural areas compared to in-town areas, because we don't want to get in a position where we're really taking away something that people already have, you know. So we, it's great to go out and say you can't build in rural areas, because we need rural areas, but, you know, to me, that's a taking. So I guess that's it. I didn't quantify them, short or long-term, but most of the downtown stuff, I consider short-term.
I'm shocked that 9.1 has got so much attention.
What's up?
Which one is that?
9.1. My 9.1 is the streamlined zoning and permitting to support housing development in the downtown village.
Yeah, you're being sarcastic, Kyle.
Facetious.
Okay, I can go now, I'm ready.
All right, Mitch?
Okay, so I, I organized it in four categories for short-term and four categories for medium-term, and I'll try to cross-reference some of the numbers that refer to these. But the first one, I just wrote, effectuate the growth areas, in other words, make the growth areas happen, and that involves rezoning the dog bone, height limits, all of that. But the numbers I called out that are related to that are NR 4.2, EC 1.2.
Okay, whoa, whoa, whoa.
NR 4.2, EC 1.
Okay, no, NR 4.2.
EC 1.2.
Anyone that finds a page number that wants to share that?
Is that right?
Actually, just write it off the list, and I'll write it down.
Yeah, I'm writing down the list, and then I'm just.
And just double-check that I, that I did it right. FL 2.1, FL 6.1, FL 6.3.
Bless you.
And TR 2.7, is that right?
FL 2.1, FL 6.1, FL 6.
6.3, and then TR 2.2.
2.2?
Yeah, 2.2. Those are all related to make the growth areas happen.
All short.
Those were your shorter.
All short-term. It's, we should be able to do all of that.
It's all long.
It's all one thing. It's all one thing. And then housing was the number two, which is related to that one, of course, but it's called out in HS 1.1, HS 1.2, HS 1.4, and just a note on the 1.4, and I think it happens on 6.2 as well, you talk about mobile homes, but you don't talk about tiny homes or other alternative, you know what I mean, there's other zoning mechanisms.
Well, so tiny, I just wanted, tiny homes aren't a specific land use, they're just considered a single-family home, so we don't have any special zoning.
Well, as long as the zoning permits that density, it's a density issue.
Well, if we increase density overall, but, yeah, right now, at least, tiny homes don't have a special density.
Right, but there, but there's no, I bet we don't have a zone that would allow it.
Allow?
At the density.
Like at a tiny home park?
Okay, so, indulge me for four sentences of fun. I was just in Florida last week. In Florida, there's a place in, in Martin County where they decided to sell, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, somebody got the bright idea to sell campsites, campsites for purchase. And so people who have RVs, they could buy a campsite, it was like an RV park campsite, that, the dimensions, you know, a pad for a car and a place for the thing.
And this happens every summer at Winslow. Not the selling part.
Right, but it's, as dense as a dense, dense campground, you know, RV park campground, that enable, that has emerged over the last 30 years into permanent houses, stick-built in that zoning. It's an amazing community of, like, 800 homes that are, something that you can't imagine, I've never seen it anywhere else, and it, it creates, I mean, I'm not sure I want to live there, but it is a housing type that is affordable, and.
It's a different spin on a mobile home.
It's a different spin on a mobile home, right. It's sort of what, anyway, the point is.
Does that, is that not captured in 6.4?
I think it is in 6.3.
It says recognize and print alternative housing styles, including cottage courts, communal living, and others.
Okay, so, so I'll just go over that list again.
6.4.
HS 1.2, HS 1.4, HS 4.1, HS 6.1, HS 6.2, HS 6.3.
Those are all HS.
That's all housing, yeah.
Okay, these are all short-term?
So that's that, short-term. Then the next one is state law, and I don't think we have an option. It seemed like many of those things, we are mandated to do, and I don't know under what timeframe, but a few of them seem super-important, particularly WR 1, WR 2, WR 5.1, NR 1, NR 2. 3, 1.4, what's that? That may be about it. But the point is, there's a whole lot of state stuff that I don't know what we're supposed to do about it, but you can't, like, just ignore it, and like, you know, do we have to protect the old grass or not, and if we do, on what timeframe? It's not my top priority, but somebody's, and it's state, you know, mandate.
So those were all short-term as well?
Short-term. And then the last one that I put in the short-term category had to do with protecting farm and rural land, and with a complete support for Andy's comment about avoiding takings, it does seem like a town priority to conserve land and to conserve rural land and to conserve agriculture land. Agriculture land can partly be concerned, conserved by zoning, rural land can only be conserved by purchase, but if the town wants to, it seems to me, it is a priority of the town to fund Freeport Conservation Trust, and, you know, to the, or look for grants to fund Freeport Conservation Trust.
I had exactly that as like a top.
Top priority.
Top priority, not necessarily.
Is there a number?
Well, it goes, I mean, we said we're gonna do this so that we can do that, and.
There is, and that's exactly what I've been looking for, is that number.
And we have to do something about that. It's, it's under, yeah, NR 3.4, NR 3.2, AF 2, AF 2.2, AF 4.1, FL 7.1.
There's one that's specifically.
FL 7.1?
I think, yeah, I mean, I hope I caught them right, so if you get the spirit, you know, but.
Did you, for the 3.4, was it NR?
Yep.
Yeah.
NR 3.2.
3.2 and 3.4.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I mean, there might be a couple others that all relate, but they're all of a, so those were the top priorities, I thought.
Yeah, so we'll go through, and, we're not done yet, but we'll go through and look at the list. There are some things that have come up as a later priority that are already actually in the work, so we'll probably.
Well, there are several things that are already done, I mean, there's a couple things.
Some of this is like, we're not even doing this?
LD 2003 already did, like, two of the things on this list.
And then if we have too many short, we might bump some into medium. One thing I will add is when staff was going through this, the duplicate policies.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Were confusing, so if you're gonna keep them, if there's a way, we can cross-reference back.
Yeah, I can just delete them, put the local goal in front of it, or like, it's part, it's just making sure that the policy's connected to the strategy, because that's how it is in the front of plan.
That's why it's repeated, and I understand that, because you're trying to show, but maybe you could use the same numbers.
I mean, I almost wonder why this implementation table wasn't set up just using the goals and strategies that were laid out in the plan, and just do it that way, you know? Instead of doing, I don't know, now it's cross-referencing to the inventory chapters?
That's for the state, but I can, I can clarify for that, but this is kind of a very standard implemented, implementation table. The state has their policy, they have their strategies. I like keeping the policies and strategies together, but I can just delete the policy column and just say it's in local goal, whatever, you go find it, but this just kind of keeps a policy there and keeps it organized based on the policy that it's connected to, but if that's too confusing, I can just delete the policy column and, because it's really focusing on the strategies, that should be the primary focus, that should probably be the first column.
They have to be grouped somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the state wants them like this, and it's grouped by the inventory chapters.
That's what I've been trying to group them in my head, like, what are we really trying to accomplish?
I would just, I would just focus on the strategies. I think that's the only thing that truthfully matters in this, is these strategies. Everything else is kind of just organization.
I think in practice, too, when we do this on a yearly basis, we can pull them out of the table, and we can format them however we want, and the Board can say, this is.
The Board can look at them, you know, in their own buckets, and then when we talk with Council, it can be viewed that way, you know, it doesn't have to be.
They're really nicely formatted, six goals up at the front. That, that's for the town, that's for you to easily understand and organize the most important things.
So we may have to pull this as we're trying to prioritize, we may have to do it that way, because that's.
Well, this sheet, in this format, is to make it easy for the state reviewers to say, these are the goals and policies for ag and forestry, these are the goals and policies for natural resources.
But maybe for our own use in trying to lay out priorities, we have to go back to the strategies as the, as the organizing principle.
Yeah, also for you guys, it might just be easier to switch the strategy and policy columns.
Right. All right, well, I'll go on, you can solve that problem, right?
The IDs are not changing, but.
I gotcha. So the lower priorities, you'll go a little quicker, connectivity, which is called out, I believe, in RC 4.1, RC 4.3, PF 3.1, FL 8.3, I guess.
FL 8.3?
Yeah, and maybe FL 7.1, too, I'm not sure I got that right. What is FL 7.1? Oh, yeah, FL 7.1. Oh, no, FL 7.1 is with the limits, is with the protect rural lands up above.
So FL 7.1 or FL 7.12? You said.
FL 7.1 belongs up with the farm and rural protection.
You had FL 7.1 in a short-term priority.
FL 8.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, 7.1 was up there in the short-term. This one is just 4, RC 4.1, RC 4.3, PF 3.1, FL 8.3.
Got it.
And then outdoor recreation and the arts, and that is particularly in EC 5.2, EC 7.1, RC 5.4, RC 7.1. And then the third one is historic, and the only ones I called out there was HA 1 and HA 2, there's more there, but those seemed like the first steps was inventory, and I think if we care at all, the first step would be to inventory, and so that should be somewhere on the horizon.
Okay.
And then the last one is anything related to the Climate Action Plan, which is not my bag exactly, so I just noted that it should be on there and let somebody else pick out the things.
So you. So you're saying anything climate action plan?
Plan, I mean, it should be.
Medium priority?
Medium priority, yeah. I don't think we can ignore it, but I didn't pick it apart.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done.
So, yeah, the way I looked at this was to front-load things that are without cost and things that are easy. So I would say there's more than five things that you could do that are probably, that probably meet those two criteria. And things like that just need changing ordinance as an example of something that's pretty much without cost. So if an ordinance change is going to further any of these goals, then we should consider it an immediate goal and prioritize it that way. I do have a question, though. Are these priorities going to be in the comprehensive plan itself or external to it?
They're going to be in the plan, but they will potentially change when you will set each, the timeframe will potentially change each year when you go and set with the council.
As of now, the.
Yeah, as of now, based upon on the feedback you've heard.
Yeah, like I look at the 2011 plan and some of the prioritization, and it's like, well, that wouldn't be the same today if we were re-looking at it, so.
So when it's, to piggyback on Wayne's comment, so when this board and then the council vote on adopting the plan, and then as part of that process, when the public gives feedback on the plan, does that mean that these priorities are sort of part of that feedback process?
Yeah, this is going to be all populated when it goes to the state. We're taking your feedback, we're going to have staff feedback, and we're going to get some, we're going to have it populated when we go to council.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, the state requires it as part of the approval and with the timeline of adopting it. So if it got adopted, say in October, you'll have, you know, three months to do some initial comp plan work. But come January or whenever the goal setting is, I assume it's January.
And then, just, I have this in mind, like, so when we go each year and update these goals and priorities, how does that, does the live document then, if somebody goes on the website and downloads the comp plan, does it reflect the most recent years updated?
I think we'll figure out how we want to do that. For the climate action, we didn't, we had a memo that kind of pulled out the goals and said these were what we think the town's goals should be for this year, and they lived that way. But Charles and Ben have been setting this up, so we'll have it forever in a usable table format. So we'll have more ability to use this as a tool, how we see fit.
I think that would be great.
Excel, it's cool.
I love it.
Don't get me started on Excel.
I love Excel. Okay, so Wayne, are you referencing specific ones or you have general?
Yeah, I will, yeah, I'm going to do that, but I just wanted to make a couple of general comments. You know, my first one, as you heard, was anything that's easy and without cost, you know, should be considered for an immediate action because there's no reason not to do them if they're good goals. And by the way, I think that priority, these priorities are an extremely part of this whole, important part of this whole process because the comprehensive plan is such a general document, and anybody could pretty much argue anything and cite the comprehensive plan as being consistent, like we do with every, everything we pass here. We say it's consistent with the last comprehensive plan. It's a very general document, so the priorities are really everything, you know. Because absent that, you know, like the last one, it could just languish for 10 years and nothing really happens in many areas. So priority is extremely important. So the way I looked at it categorically is that housing is the number one priority. Housing and safety issues are the two priorities that I looked at. So anything to do with protecting water resources is a safety issue. And I would just note that whether it's valid or not, the Environmental Working Group says that the South Freeport Water District has 450 times the safe level of arsenic in its water. So I'm not saying that's a fact or that their analysis is correct, but protecting water resources is an extremely important thing. So I would specifically cite all of the water resource items that are safety-related. I didn't enumerate those. So then getting to housing, that's my second most important priority. I'll mention a few specific provisions, HA2.1.
Can you just speak, I'm sorry, I can't hear that.
Yeah. Under housing, HA2.1, which basically talks about adding housing, HS1.1, HS1 dash 2, HS2 dash 1, HS5 dash 1, HS, I said that HS5, HS6.1, HS6.2, HS6.3. And I did have a question about the term age-friendly. I wasn't sure if that was the best term to use, and that's in HS6.1.
What was that last one?
HS6.1, I'm questioning the term.
Oh, just questioning the one you previously said.
Age-friendly seems a little unclear. The other term I don't really love in the housing sections are workforce housing. I'm not sure why we want to call it workforce housing, because there's also retiree housing, and there's college student housing, and all kinds of people besides, you know. And the workforce term, to me, evokes like a classist kind of, you know, term. Like, why are we calling it workforce? You know, it's.
So we don't have to call it affordable?
We would call it yuppie empty nester. That's what I would.
I'd rather call it affordable if that's what we're getting at.
But is it, because there's like small A, affordable housing, and then there's capital A, defined term, affordable housing. But workforce housing is not a defined term, is it? It's just a sort of broadly.
It's defined in some places as affordable housing to A. They're usually tied together, like that's why I wasn't pushing back when I'm talking about it.
Maybe we need still a better term than either affordable or workforce because, yeah, as Mitch just agreed, workforce just sounds kind of classist. And, you know, reminds me of a company town that's going to build housing for its, you know, for its workers. Doesn't seem.
Well, I mean, I've heard a lot of people talk about, you know, people wanting to live and work in town here, you know. The workers can't be here. They have to live somewhere else, so workforce housing here in town, I think is reasonable.
There's also retirees who would love to live in Freeport if.
Have the same, roughly the same need.
Yeah, we pretty quickly find ourselves back at the variety of housing options.
Variety of housing sizes and types.
At a variety of price points, yeah.
I'm going to loop us back to Wayne's list because we still have to get through Sam's.
Okay, so basically, as a whole, housing would be my priority because, you know, people look for housing in Freeport, and you need to be a millionaire now to buy a house in Freeport. And that's, that should be considered a crisis point at this point.
Okay, and so for your water resources, did you have specific numbers? Because that would be helpful. Did.
They're pretty front-loaded, I think, right?
Yeah.
On the pages.
It's WR, it's the second group.
WR1.2, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so WR1.2 is the Urban Impaired Stream Watershed Management Plan. Both 1.1 and 2.1. And then there's WR3.2 is Public Wellhead and Aquifer Recharge Area Protection Mechanisms. And then 3.3 is Water Quality Protection Practices and Standards.
So are these ones you're picking, Wayne, or?
Yeah, I would, I would go along with that. And my last top priority would be the things that are transportation bicycle-related because that's a safety issue, too. You know, you could save lives by having appropriate bike paths and appropriate barriers. That class of, yeah, anything to do with transportation safety, which I'm focusing primarily on bicycles and pedestrians, but that would be a top priority for me.
Was your first one RC6.1, 5.1, and 5.2?
RC4.1, 5.1.
5.1 and 5.2.
And 5.2, yeah. I also noted FL6.1, let me see what that is.
It's the inclusivity.
What is it?
Consider requiring or enhancing accessibility and age-friendly features in all new or renovated public areas.
FL6.1?
I'm not sure.
No, that's RC6.1.
He said FL6.1.
Which is one we, yeah, we do have that one that was mentioned before, so that doubles on one of the existing ones.
Okay, so that's it for my.
FL6.1.
Right zoning. The downtown village.
Basically revise zoning in all of the growth areas.
Yeah, I thought he was talking about accessibility.
That was, that's my bad, I was wrong.
Oh, okay. All right, so those are all your short. Did you have a medium list?
Yeah, so the medium, the rest of the natural resource protection items.
What section is that?
I don't have specific ones, just, you know, the rest of the, anything to do with safety or environmental protection would be my second medium term, would be my medium-term recommendation. Under economic development, this is also mid-level. And the marine resource sections. And at the risk of mentioning a topic that came up earlier, under the PF section. PF4.2 and PF5.2. I was going to mention that EV chargers should be part of that because many things that are in the same category are mentioned there specifically, but it doesn't mention EV chargers. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Charles, one question on this, were you guys done populating the planning column?
I think some of them I got missed. The which ones?
Were you guys done populating the plan column?
I believe so. I might be missing some, but.
Is this missing a D or is that something else?
That's, I already, I have that down, that's missing a D. It's the television plan.
Probably have one.
The EV, Wayne, is captured under FL11.1 because it's more land use-oriented to kind of what Kyle was talking before, that like really look at the EV in the, because it does specifically say is like amending the zoning ordinance and stuff like that. So it can be in both, but the strategy speaks to both.
I feel like one thing that could make this read better is, it's not like at the beginning of the FL section, if you said what the FL is, like right in here is that better?
I'm just going to put future land use on, in the section, and, or like.
So now, yeah.
I was going to, and I have a little, I have stuff to make clarify that a little bit more. I didn't think I would need to draw the connection more directly, but I can do that for sure. That was oversight on my part.
Just one more thing, the, under FL, the encourage, the, you know, FL6.4, it's the transit-oriented development, downtown village, village gateway, earth areas, walkable, transit-friendly hubs. That's all part of the Dogbone Report, which Dogbone proponents all touted as being ready to implement immediately. So I would add that to the top priority because it's been, it's been teed up so well and so ready to be implemented. And that was the whole purpose of submitting that report, that, you know, this is what we could do right now.
Yeah, I believe that work has already started.
6.4.
6.4.
Yes.
Oh, gotcha, the one that says transit-oriented development.
All right, are we going to hop on to Sam? We got all the rules?
Yep, I think a lot of, there's going to be a lot of duplication here. I definitely kind of stuck to my comfort zone of housing. And, you know, stuff that was sort of planning board jurisdiction for the most part. So I'm just going in page order here, starting with short-term. And I do have more than five, but I'll try to go quick. I had NR3.2.
Are you on page, you do on page numbers?
Page number B5, or 5.
Okay, NR3.2?
NR4.2 and NR4.3. And then I would sort of add to that, I guess going back one page, NR2.2. And that's sort of on the theme of how can we protect rural areas without the taking part? Like exploring private, public-private partnerships or finding, you know, state-level grants or partnering with local land trusts, that kind of thing, so that we're encouraging conservation without just saying. Oh, sorry, now it's 10-acre minimum lots and you're all non-conforming. Let's see, skipping ahead to. Did I miss some? Page 11, HS6.3, that's reducing minimum lot sizes, setbacks, et cetera. I did put the note on this that I would support it downtown, not necessarily everywhere, but downtown. And then on page 18, FL6.1, zoning regulations in downtown village and gateway and Route South, Route 1 South. And then on page 19, FL6.2 was another short-term. That's incentives for infill. And then the last page, 20, FL9.1, House favorite one. For medium, that's a little more outside of the planning board only on these ones. But I had H, right on the first page, B1, HA2.1. That's adaptive reuse. I had NR3.1 on page 4, that's the wildlife corridor. And then I had kind of, I saw on, this is page 6, AF2.1 and AF2.2 as being medium-term, kind of similar to the, the other two that I mentioned earlier. But just a slightly slower rollout maybe, or lower priority. And on page 11, I saw the density height bonuses, this is, sorry, HS7.1, expedited permitting or fee waivers to encourage developers to provide a percentage of affordable or workforce-level homes in larger projects. I said that was a media, I think it's a great goal, but I saw it on a slower timeline just because it's a little more complicated than some of the low-hanging fruit fixes. And then just below that, on, still on page 11, RC1.1, creating a list of recreation needs and/or developing a recreation plan to meet current and future needs. RC4.1, that's trail connectivity. Page 15, PF4.1, that's stormwater management systems. And that's, I mean, there's, I picked that one, but there's other sort of water quality ones like this, the urban restoration, stream restoration, I put in a plug for that, too. But Wayne, beat me. And then PF6.2, assessing capacity and vulnerability of existing infrastructure.
Sorry, was that PF6.2?
Yes, yep, and that's kind of the climate-infrastructure intersection that I think is important. And then on page 19, FL6.3 and FL7.1. And that's, again, infrastructure upgrades and conservation subdivision. And then last page, I had three more going toward, you know, redesigning Main Street, kind of connectivity stuff. That's FL8.3, 9.2, and 10.1. And that's it. That was way more than five.
About five?
Five-ish.
Nobody gets a prize for sticking to 5 and 5. Bonnie might have been the closest.
Well, Mitch got us permission to go above 5.
So many of them are overlapping and.
Thank you, you guys clearly put a lot of time into consideration of that before the meeting, and I think there are some clear overlapping priorities that we can easily bump into short and medium categories.
Do it all over again in January.
It's a public meeting, you can feel free to attend.
I probably will.
You'll be able to do that in a minute.
I'll be here.
Could I ask what's going to happen to those wonderful suggestions?
Well, tomorrow Kyle and I are going to sit down and compare notes, and we're going to work on populating this, so, and we're going to connect with Charles, because I think we have a little slightly different version coming out. We're going to produce it, so it'll be ready to go when we go to council for discussion on the 15th.
Could we see?
It will be. We will have a cleaned-up, filled-in version, ready for public viewing sometime soon before the council meeting on the 15th. Yep.
And that it still be, would be reviewed and revised annually?
Yeah, this will be the starting point. Yep. And I'm sure once we get the finalized draft and get out there, I do expect we'll have some comment, public comment on this.
Every one of them could be a high priority. Should be, maybe, but capacity is capacity, I guess. All right, Charles and/or Ben, do you guys have anything else for us?
No.
Thank you.
We have some good changes to make, some edits. If you have any of that word smithing stuff or typos, it's a long document, especially when you're reading the inventory chapters. If there's any typos there, please let us know, we can clean those up. I think we want to make this as polished as possible. I think before we adopt it, even in the fall, we'll do a much, much closer review.
So does anyone here, I think David does, does anyone else have changes that they plan to submit in the next 24 hours for the revised version for the state? Bonnie does, David does?
Maybe, maybe. I don't know about 24 hours, tomorrow's pretty packed, so probably won't happen.
I was looking for an alternative to the word workforce, if that, can you come up with something, or do you want me to try?
We.
I was going to put the ball in your court.
Yeah, that's, because I, I think the, the chat, the intent with age, especially on housing, and I don't mind talking about it a little, that housing where we know the gaps are inaffordably affordability, accessibility, diversity of type, and really when we talk about affordability, we didn't want to use the word affordable throughout this process, that's what we heard. And really, the only other one, which is workforce, which is inherently, you know, not, the Portland defines workforce as affordable for 60% or 80% AMI, don't quote me on it. But they're interchanged in a, in a similar fashion that when we talk about preserve and conserve, we're intending essentially the same thing, but we went with the word conserve to be consistent. We strip back the word affordable based on your feedback to use workforce. If you can find, if there's a better way to describe it, it's much more of a challenge. And again, this isn't locking us into anything. Even if you set affordable incentives, if it turns out that wasn't feasible, or it was too murky with the affordable housing density bonus, LLD 2003, they can all change in implementation. I, I, I don't want to say this is binding, but I think it's supposed to be more guiding. And when we start getting into the differences between workforce and affordable, or we say we're going to build housing that people who make $65,000 to $95,000 a year are creating rentals.
In the same, in the same trap as affordable with a capital A.
Could you put something in here, generally speaking? So as a community, we haven't had conversations to define what these different common terminologies mean to us. So could we put something in, kind of reflect how David summarized it? Generally speaking, within this document, the term workforce is intended to mean, you know, affordable to the people that work within the community of Freeport, or something broad like that?
And I, I would hesitate to do that, because I, I think the more specific you get, the more you corner yourself in.
Why can't you just say a, a variety of housing sizes, types, and price points?
Because you have to repeat that whole phrase every time workforce housing.
Does it sound like half pages?
We have that, and we, I think it's in there, I think it's captured.
I think that is a specific thing already.
Like, I think we're talking about the same thing, and if we keep stripping it back.
You comfortable with this?
I'm very comfortable with this. And I think it's, it's not, because it can be, I think Wayne said it, it can be used, the comp link can be used in either way, whether for, or like in a zoning in the future. It can be wielded, you know, to lift something up or knock something down. If, the more vague you are, the harder it is to use it as an effective planning document. So I think using the words like affordable, conserve, preserve, even like, I know equity was vague in this sense, so I'm not disagreeing with that, but as, just as an example, if we're talking about a lot of these different things, and we're trying to like be precise and exact, that's not really planning. It's really hard to use that. But if we're saying workforce, we know the intent is to get, you know, different price points. Like, when we talk about housing stock and affordability, we're not saying only 60% AMI houses, there will also be the high end, undoubtedly. We know how expensive it is in Freeport now, but I think we're trying just to balance that, and that's expressed through the inventory chapters, through the vision and all throughout the plan. So to David's point, I think it is, you know, I think it's peeled back enough where it's not binding forever, and you guys are going to be mad at me in seven years, being like, maybe Charles is wrong. I'm pretty confident to say that this plan captures a lot of what we've heard from the public and what we've learned just from the data. So again, I think it's more, it provides you that foundation to move forward, to have the conversations to define workforce, to have the conversation to define age-friendly when you, when those come up, because I think that's important, but this is kind of just framing those conversations.
My objection wasn't that it's going to bind us to anything particular, it's that it's basically inaccurate, because it excludes all kinds of other groups that aren't necessarily the workforce. You know, again, retirees, could be people who are.
Students sharing housing, yeah.
Students, yeah, I mean, all kinds of people are not defined as workforce.
It's a bad term.
Then we go, then we have to look at this whole, it's.
We can do a word search.
I do think that's tackled under.
Yeah, how many does it come up?
But then it's also affordable, what does conserve mean? Like, how?
We will take another look at it with North Star.
What if you use the word more affordable, does that get you out of the capital A?
I would like to take another look at it to see how many times it's used and how it's used, and if there's something more appropriate we can insert, we will.
Like, if we need to do, because we did that with the housing chapter, that this is census data, it's very, you know, general, it's census data, it's not the best, it's just what it is. But the, we could go through and, you know, create a framing section that talks like affordable, but then we'll have to come back and talk about when we say workforce, we're meaning that, then we're going to be kind of going down the rabbit hole again, and I just want to, like, it's really, it's hard to do that at this level, and I'm not saying it's not possible, it's just we're, that's getting into the weeds and becomes even, I can see that becoming more of an issue, saying like, oh, if this new, like, example, like if cottage courts, even though it's called out, isn't allowed, you become, you know, restricted in that manner, like if you go down that road. So we are saying, you're framing the conversation of affordability, workforce housing, you name it, for the next 15 years. I think that would kind of, could be limiting, really in a sense, when we're talking about housing, zoning, all of these things. So we can, we'll definitely touch base about it, but I really want to be hesitant, because I, I wouldn't want to see that in a plan, whether it's as a planning board member, as a counselor. I think that could be really limiting when we're trying to like create the actual policy.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think there must be a better word out there.
So I'm looking at.
I'm not disagreeing with your concept.
HS 4.1, right, it says preserve and create opportunities, workforce and mixed income options. So it like references workforce, but it's also bringing in other mixed income situations, which, you know, it talks about missing middle, and so it references workforce, but it also references these other types of.
Yeah.
Why don't we just say mixed income and leave out workforce?
Is that a state, is that a state or local?
That's a local, probably.
I think it's local.
Mixed income makes sense to me.
And it comes, I mean, I think that the broader policy there is referencing the downtown vision plan, so I don't know if that one came right from the downtown vision or what, but.
Housing Task Force?
It's the ad hoc housing task force.
Yeah, all right, we will flag that, because if it's coming out of another plan, we don't want to change their wording.
It's, it said attainable housing, essential housing, and we're not going to use this one, affordable housing for working-class and middle-income households.
No, let's go with that one.
But, yeah, I mean, I think, I'm not saying that's the only, but I, yeah, if we just go.
Attainable.
I think, yeah, I think.
Could be a word.
I think we can circle the, the perfect word forever, and each time the, sort of like the broader society chooses a word, then it's going to get freighted down with all sorts of.
Freight is the right word.
With meanings that, you know, weren't intended initially, and we're always going to be chasing words. I, I do understand.
Maryland has a plan, though.
I do understand the sort of like class overtones of workforce housing as a, as a concern, so I think if it's a simple word switch and we can figure out what the word is, I would probably vote for attainable on that 30-second word search. But, anyway, all right.
So with, with the changes we've discussed tonight and the prior station we've discussed tonight, is the consensus of the board that this is signable for Sam to initiate a state review during a broader public comment period?
Yeah, and again, I, it's come so far, you know, I think you guys have worked really, really hard, and I know the community has worked hard and put a lot into it too, but I know you guys have done the heavy lifting, and it was really, I mean, particularly, I know, I keep talking about the inventory chapters, but like seeing how far those have come was really good, you know, over the last week, looking at those again, and then seeing the formattings come together, seeing how carefully you guys have considered the public feedback over time. I mean, even just looking at, you know, this, some of the comments that we got today, and it's like, okay, those were on something we talked about less than two weeks ago, and a lot of the changes are already incorporated, in, at least in part, so, kudos.
In general, you heard the public saying that, that they basically thought, you know, they, they had all these ways to make it better, but they thought you were on the right, they weren't.
Yeah.
And it's not, this is not a small lift.
The one is incredibly angry.
No.
It's not a small lift, you know, there's a lot of, there's diverse opinions and interests, and I think if we can hit the high points and move forward, I'm excited about that, so, yeah. Cool. Thank you, gentlemen.
And then also, back on the 15th in this room, not with the rest, but if you wanted to come, you know, voice your perspective as planning board members.
Um, yeah, it probably won't be a public hearing. It'll probably be a rather short conversation, us reporting out and taking feedback, but if anyone can come, Sam won't be here, so if anyone else wants to come.
If that's, you know, a little extra incentive for you guys to come.
Feel free. So Sam's going to give us a letter before he goes on vacation, and we're also going to get him to sign the letter before he goes on vacation.
What's to do? All right.
And we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Have a great vacation.
Where are you going?
I'll go to the UK.
Oh, nice.
Wow, awesome.